Good evening and welcome to the Sacramento City Council meeting. Will everybody please find some seats? We're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shanier, Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening, but we expect Councilmember Ashby momentarily.
All right, and I know that she's on her way down. I was trying to see if there's anybody who's really interested in doing the pledge tonight. Mr. Cooley, would you like to do the pledge for us? Come on, come on down. I was looking for a willing... Oh, no, come over to the podium, please. Yeah, we want to treat it right.
You're on the spot, it's really there.
I begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, we have one special presentation tonight, and I believe Councilmember Harris has it, recognizing February 25th as the Sacramento Area Coalition Spay Day for 2018. Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hanson. So, we missed the Spay Day by a few days here, but we still want to recognize that the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition is a great bunch of people who do low-cost spay and neuter for people of modest means around the city. I'm sure most of you know that there are a lot of unwanted animals, and of course, our Front Street Animal Shelter is trying to get to a zero-kill tolerance. So, we've really got to prevent the birth of unwanted animals, and the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition does just that. So, are Jennifer and Carrie here? Can you come up to the podium for a moment?
Carrie Haller.
Carrie, can you tell us a little bit about what happened at Spay Day? How many animals you treated? How many volunteers? Just sort of give us the lowdown. You do this annually.
We do this every year for the past 19 years. It's an annual event. This year, we spayed and neutered roughly 220 cats and dogs at 10 different local shelters and veterinary clinics. And we've been doing this since 1999. This is our 19th year. We're an all-volunteer organization, and we get a lot of our supplies donated. So, the goal is for us to offer low-income dog and cat owners a $15 spay or neuter for... that's for their cat, and a $20 spay or neuter for their dog. That also includes core vaccines, microchip registration, and flea prevention. So, it's otherwise about $300 that they would have to pay out of pocket at a private clinic. So, we're offering them a great deal.
Well, in other words, you do a tremendous service to the city, and you take all the burden out of dealing with animals in this way for people of modest means. So, it's really a wonderful service you do. Do you operate year-round?
We have Spay Day annually, but then we operate from grants and fundraisers that we have from our volunteer board to issue vouchers to those locally in Sacramento County.
Nice. Well, I'd just like to personally thank you, because this is an important issue for the city.
Thank you.
And you definitely... The combination of yourselves and Front Street Animal Shelter are doing just a tremendous job to keep our animals safe and make sure that the ones we have are wanted animals.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to come down and give you this resolution, and thank you very much for your annual Spay Day.
We appreciate the recognition. Thank you so much.
Just because we have a fairly limited number of speakers on consent tonight, we're going to do the consent calendar, and then we'll do public comment. It should only take a few minutes, and then we'll get on with the rest of the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the consent items? And we have, I think, three speakers.
I have three speakers. I have three speakers for consent: Pastor Jonathan Gainsborough, Michael Hawkins, and then Mac Elworthy. Pastor Gainsborough?
We'll put you in public comment. Eric?
I'm already in public comment.
It's okay, we're not going to have a back-and-forth. But Pastor Gainsborough, you're up for your consent calendar item. And then after that, Mr. Hawkins, and then Mac Worthy.
Vice Mayor, good to see you in council. Good evening. Item 16 on the consent, it says, "Adverse impacts of cannabis-related developments on neighborhoods. Enter into neighborhood responsibility agreements and establish a mitigation fund." I'm totally in favor of the study going beyond just our local thinking to the adverse effects already being recognized in Colorado and other states with an increase... a decrease in drunken accidents and fatalities, and an increase in the fatalities of cannabis-induced behavior. So, I hope that you can transmit to Mayor Steinberg that a study nationally of the adverse effects of marijuana... There are cities already and counties in California that are refusing to agree with the state in so-called legalizing of marijuana. Before, most of the proponents of the marijuana/cannabis sales were even born, I was growing it and seeing the adverse effects of it on our nation. If you were to survey most of the homeless and ask them how many have found success from marijuana versus an adverse effect, I think it would be preponderantly in the negative arena. Finally, the adverse effects on the children of Sacramento... The adverse effects on the children of Sacramento could never be measured in dollars and cents. The city fathers, I believe you can hear what I'm saying.
Thank you, Pastor Gainsborough. Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Michael Hawkins, and then Mac Worthy.
Michael, welcome.
Councilmembers, Michael Hawkins, I'm a registered lobbyist for the city of Sacramento. I'm here on behalf of All About Wellness and Cura Corporation. I want to make comments on item 16, which is Neighborhood Responsibility Plan. First of all, just some general comments. All About Wellness will have to increase their revenues by 30% in order to stay even from last year, and that's the result of all the new fees and taxes. They were not aware that there was a third alternative for neighborhood responsibility plans. It says in the city code that you can work something out with the city, and that's exactly what they would like to do. They would like to know what the criteria is for the study. They would like to participate in analyzing their neighborhood, because quite frankly, they just bought a large building right next door that had a large business in it. That business has moved out, so they're improving the neighborhood. There have never been any complaints in eight years on the operation of their business. So, what they would like to do is they would like to have that opportunity. I just wanted to point out a couple of things with the ordinance that you're enacting tonight. I believe that it requires a vote, either a vote of a majority of the property owners or a two-thirds vote of the citizens of the city of Sacramento. Therefore, I think that it's potentially going... could potentially be challenged legally. Also, the way the funding is being spent in districts, it needs to be spent to mitigate the issues related to specific properties. So, I would ask that the city manager's office and the city attorney look into that issue. The final thing I want to let you know is that 1% is a tax on a tax. 19% of the basis on which the tax is figured is a 15% state excise tax, and then the 4% state...
Thank you for your comments.
So, it's a tax on a tax, and I would encourage you to think about whether you want to implement that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Worthy, you're up.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council. Why do we keep sandbagging on this issue? This is what we call by legal sandbag. The Longledge is not a lawyer for this city, and that's where your problem lies, in Longledge. It lies in the NAACP and Longledge. NAACP cannot and will not represent the majority of we Negroes in this town. We got the opportunity to make money. The mayor said, "I recommended 2.5." He said, "A million dollars." Now, where that million dollars going to sit? What impact can it have within a neighborhood than it already have had? Now, we saw this in our school district. Drug-free zone. You called a cop, two men, and smoked three joints before the cop get there. So, you're wasting time, people. There is people making money on growing marijuana right here now in Sacramento. There is people that service, and those service to people making money. The medical world is not freed by the federal government, and you know that. Why are you telling these people they got to have two licenses, a city license and a state license? There's no other organization have been established here have to have that. Go with alcohol and tobacco. Get a government some too, and you'll get the stuff moving on. Because these people was looking forward to put... get some people employed, and they not even get the medical marijuana dispenser up. What are they doing? What are you looking for to come out of study? It's nothing to come out of study and all the... If you looked at the TV over the couple of weekends, you saw the effect in Detroit. But you refuse to use that knowledge to improve your thinking and let these people know this is your risk. The neighborhood do not control which black people, what the state refers, African-American do not have a neighborhood. It's at large. Maybe you have 10 here and 10 there, 15 there, somebody pimping them, and it's from up there.
Worthy, thank you for your comments. Councilmember Shanier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, I want to address item 16 just for a minute, and actually, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this at this point. I want to see if we can add some direction. The stance I've taken in the last couple of issues that came to Longledge is just to kind of leave things as they are for a while and let them settle, see where we are. Probably in about six months, we'll have a much better idea. So, I know we're going forward with this, but what I'd like to ask the city manager and the vice mayor to talk with the mayor about it is to actually put together a workshop, I think in about six months from now, which really covers what's happening with Sacramento and the cannabis industry, both from the perspective of the city. So, how are we doing on all of the ordinances that we passed? How are we doing on the accountability pieces that people have really spoken about, I think, quite articulately? And then, but also, I want to look at it from the idea of our vendors and the industry itself. We have, and particularly on adult use, as the lobbyist said, we have a lot of taxes that are piled on one another. And I don't want to be in a position of kind of killing the golden goose here. I mean, we want to increase health, public health, we want to increase public safety, and we want to achieve some revenues off of this for the city. And so, we want to make sure that as we work with the industry in partnership, we want a healthy industry, and so we want to know kind of where they are and the impact of additional taxes, how it's going. By then, we'll have the NEXIS study come out, we'll have some experience also with, I think, hopefully, a number of our grows being up and running, as well as our manufacturers, which we know are already running and doing well. So, I really want us to operate from more data, which we don't have, I know that. I've talked to lots of people around the state, we're probably ahead of everyone in the state. I want to keep us there, but I also want us to not just say, "Okay, let's go and let it go." I think we need to continually come back and take a look at this. So, I think probably, and we can work with Mr. Devlin on this, what a good timeframe for when we think here in Sacramento, the industry is up and running, and then take a look at it. And again, very importantly to me, from both perspectives, both from the operator's side and from the city's side. So, I would like to add that direction.
So, is that a motion to approve the consent calendar with that direction on the item?
I'm good with that.
Second. Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Shanier, and a second from Councilmember Guerra. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to make clear that, you know, there are some things that I think I'd like to see some clarity on relative to the NEXIS study, and I think Jay's idea, you know, of coming back workshop, I think that's great. However, you know, as we go forward, there's been a, as was anticipated, a... I don't want to say saturation, but there's been a over-distribution of applicants in District 2 as well as in District 6. And I know early on, we had talked about having the opportunity for this new enterprise to be more evenly dispersed throughout the city. And so, if we're going to come back in six months, we still have a, I think, somewhat of a blind spot right now, and that is that applicants and applications are being approved right now, and they're being, again, approved in disproportionate numbers to a couple of council districts. And one of the concerns I have is that the approvals that are taking place now, unless we do something to change the way the ordinance was approved, they're grandfathered in at a scale relative to the NEXIS study that allows them to cap whatever their community impacts are at 1%. However, if it comes back that it's less than 1% in terms of their impacts, they float down to a number that's less than 1%. And I completely agree with that, completely agree with that. However, if the impacts are determined to be greater than 1%, there's no mechanism right now for us to adjust the fee relative to the businesses that will potentially be impacted. And my concern is that in vulnerable communities, we do not have the benefit of trying to figure out where to get other resources to help deal with the impacts. My concern, and this is not an anti-cannabis issue, this is an equity issue, my concern is that the NEXIS study should be tied to whatever our fee is, and that fee should be consistent, be it up or down, as it relates to what the NEXIS study says. And so, I had some conversations with the mayor and some assurances that we were going to have this issue addressed, and I know he's not here today, but I'd just like to table my concerns to make sure that irrespective of the NEXIS study and irrespective of the ordinance that's in place now, the impacts that are determined should be mitigated by the amount that's charged based on the findings of the NEXIS study. Otherwise, we're going to continue to burden our urban and our particularly minority communities in a way that will make it very difficult for them to rebound and respond to them. And we know, we know that, that, you know, when this drug was illegal, we know some of the impacts that it had on some of these minority and urban communities. And so, my concern is just if we're going to compound this issue if we don't address this technicality is what I believe, and I hope it's the will of the council that we all see this as something that we can correct, and we should correct, and that we will correct. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Your comments are well-taken. With that, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Consent calendar passes. I do have one person who wanted to speak after the vote, Mr. Chris Andrew. And then we'll do public comment after this. So, while Mr. Andrew is coming up, Mr. Voy, you're after him.
I see. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. Chris Andrew, a local 522, Vice President. On behalf of all the firefighters that I represent, I just wanted to thank you for item number four. We appreciate everything you've done. I think, for some of you especially, it's been a lot, many years of some tough times through the recession. Things are looking up, things are getting better. We negotiated a contract back in 2014 that both sides thought was just okay, and many said, "Oh, that's fair, because most... both sides are not completely happy." And part of that was working on further this re-opener that you guys approved for us with that vote, and I want to thank you for that. I think that, for me, as a leader of the firefighters' union, it's very refreshing, it's very important that we have, over the years, been able to talk to each other and work together and collaborate and just share perspectives. The political world that we live in today is pretty aggressive, and I don't think we've ever had to do that. On either side, we can talk and work together, and I appreciate that. Moving forward, I did want to say especially thank you to you for hiring the city manager that you have. I want to do a special thank you to Mr. Howard Chan for really listening to us and understanding, and for the first time in many years, we feel like we have someone who's trying to make some improvements of the fire department that we need. And it's not just about a contract, it's about service, it's about response time to ambulances, and providing the best service for our residents. So, I just wanted to especially thank him for listening. We don't always agree, but we can share perspectives. So, as we move forward and we... Our fire chief's retiring, we're getting a new fire chief, I'm completely very confident in that Howard is going to get us a good chief that's going to lead our department forward and keep on working these... working on these issues that we have moving forward. So, again, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all my members.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Thank you very much. So, we have public speakers on items not on the agenda. Mr. Voy, you're up first, Michael Voy. And then after Mr. Voy is Mr. Kevin Carter, and then Greg Glavonovich.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Approximately three weeks ago, I had my preliminary remarks for this evening with respect to the science project at McClatchy, and many of you probably are generally aware of that, and I won't go through that again. There are a number of takeaways from that incident and the town hall meeting that occurred after... subsequent to that. But for me, the biggest takeaway has been that we have several groups of minorities, predominantly African-American and Hispanics, that are self-selecting out. Comments of Mr. Aguilar, the superintendent at the school, indicates that there's under-representation, not only in the HISP program, but there's also under-representation in the number of McClatchy graduates or... that apply to places like UCLA, Berkeley, and City College, Long Beach City College. So, as a result of that, I'm proposing a, what I refer to as mathematics workshop, because we have to address preparation and academic preparation and confidence-building in academic preparation, so there isn't self-selection out of programs that are beneficial for young people. The program would be something that would operate at lunchtime or before work. It would be a tutor-mentorship program in which those groups of employees that have mathematical ability would tutor employees that would like to benefit their students, their parent... their children, rather. And so, I propose that. I've given you an outline for it, it's much too detailed to go through in exactly two minutes, but we'll let you look at it, and I have my contact information there, and your questions, comments, or concerns.
Your comments, Mr. Voy. Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you're up next. Kevin Carter.
On December 4th, 1968...
Mr. Carter, you... please, you're addressing the council.
Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Please, Mr. Carter, please use the microphone and the podium and address the council.
3,000...
Mr. Carter, please address the council and not the audience.
Back to Washington, DC. He sent 3,000 poor people back to Washington, DC to make demands.
We're going to do it again.
Yes, we are. And then these demands that they made, to get them out of the conditions that they were in, that were causing them to come out of poverty. And today, we face these same conditions. And one of the conditions that we face in our own city is in the Oak Park community, to where 25, 250 jobs are being offered in the last three years from Safeway, only if Safeway is able to build their store in the Curtis Park community of the Crocker community. And we're asking the city council to go and revisit this, so that the Oak Park community is not disenfranchised, and that poverty is not still being completed there. And what I mean by that, that there has not been no kind of union jobs or jobs offered in the Oak Park community in the last three years. See, there's a store that there's now that Rayleigh has, but Rayleigh has not done anything at food source for the Oak Park community. And this is what I'm saying, that's why I want you to reach out and revisit this, it's very important for the Oak Park community. See, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of coming here and talking to you and being the leader in my community for the poor folks.
Mr. Carter, your time is up.
I need your help.
Mr. Carter.
I'm reaching out to each and every one of you right now.
Mr. Carter, you've been...
And I don't mind going to jail tonight. I don't mind being removed from...
Mr. Carter, you have been warned. Please, your time is up.
I wanted to repeal the speech.
Sergeants, sergeants.
I have people that represent me around the nation about the poor in the house. I need your help.
Mr. Carter.
I need your help.
Mr. Carter.
I need you to... Me, child, I need your help. I'm not here to cause any disturbance. I just need you to hear me tonight.
Sergeants, please remove Mr. Carter.
My community needs you. The different sizes, shapes, and colors of the poor need you. Because Mr. Shanier has not done the right thing here tonight.
Order, order in the chambers.
In the last three years, Mr. Shanier, you have not done the right thing.
Sergeants, please remove this man.
On 15th, Reverend Martin Luther King holds a pillar of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And you need to do the right thing.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Order in the chamber, order in the chamber. Mr. Glavonovich, it is your turn.
I have a speech on plans for a disaster, any disaster. If you have no water for two or three days, you're dead. Number one, get a water filter, different brand names, Sawyer Filter, Berkey Filter, LifeStraw, Google, do a Google search or amazon.com. Simple LifeStraw for $15, you can drink water anywhere, creek, the gutter. Yeah, a Berkey Filter doesn't just filter water, the FDA says it purifies the water, removes the cadmium, mercury, arsenic, lead, industrial agricultural waste, removes bacteria and viruses. Get a Berkey Sports Bottle for the backpack, 30 bucks. Store food and water in the garage enough to last 30 days. Get your neighbors to store food also, otherwise they'll come knocking on your door, "Hey, can I borrow some food?" No, they're going to steal it. Get some dogs to protect your food. Plant a garden, get security cameras. A crisis can come in various forms, emergency disaster in various ways, dollar collapses. If Presidents Trump, Putin, North Korea get in a fistfight or the dollar collapses, the trucks will stop coming to Sacramento for four days straight. The food stores, Rayleigh's, Safeway, Trader Joe's, Food Co-op, et cetera, will run out of food in four days, or it'll be rioting in the streets. That's about it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Pastor Cannard. After her is Rebecca Person, I believe, and then after Ms. Person is Cynthia Sperling. Pastor Cannard, welcome. That's okay.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and everyone. I will boycott Campbell's Street products because they have no recollection of me being sexually harassed April and/or May 1993, according to Mr. Don Shannon. Monies will be given to me, I ask for a large amount. to Mr. Don Shannon. Monies will be given to me. I ask for a large amount. It will be used for the legalization of prostitution, of course, my bills. It will help stop homelessness, rape, incest, and mentally challenged, of mentally challenged adults, kids, little kids, sex trafficking, non-consensual sex. I never asked before. Letter B, number four, is Holy Spirit, Holy Ghost, or Great White Spirit. Yes, there's the Trinity. Please boycott Campbell's Soup products. Legalization of prostitution needs to get started now. I wish there was rent control in all 50 states. The earth will be 1 billion years old, A.D. Hugh Hefner said he didn't want to regret anything. The same thing I said to my Lord God. Father, I don't want to regret anything. I need a sexual harassment lawyer. Oh, where there's a lawyer, a sexual harassment lawyer. President Donald Trump, be merciful to illegal aliens, especially everyone. Be merciful. You'll need mercy, too. Car insurance is high. Ooh, child, things are going to get easier. Ooh, child, things are going to get brighter. I'm not going to put microchips in me because of cancer. It might be cancerous. Allegedly, Apple Computer allegedly killed a 91-year-old customer trying to get help at customer service. Ask her age, you'll be there one day. Oh, there's no such thing as hell. No, no fire in Brimstone, no lake of fire, worms crawling through your body. God's mercy endured forever to a thousand generations. Sorry, I have to leave. I have to go to work. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Rebecca Person, are you here? There you are. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I am coming to speak about the Safeway jobs. I stand with Brother Carter on we need to have the, we need to approve it. I'm depending on you, Mr. Jennings. I know Mr. Carter did the right thing last time, and so did Mr. Warren.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Oh, I can't address them personally. That's right.
Yeah, you can address your comments to me.
Okay, well, I'm depending on all of you guys to make the right decision, not the decision that you guys did last time where the court documents showed that you guys were being not too honest, right? And so we need, we need those jaws for that we need to, I went to the location on Sunday. There's no reason why that place Safeway should not be done. It's not affecting anybody in the neighborhood. We're not moving, bringing criminals. We're not trying to bring a criminal facility there. What they're trying to do is give jobs and have a, you know, the gas station pumps. So when it comes up, I hope you guys support it, because it is election year in June, so let's see if you guys get to stick around longer. If not, hey, everybody goes out.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Spurling. After Ms. Spurling is Mr. Eric Frame. Is Cynthia Spurling here? Oh, there she is. Okay, we'll give you a second to come down. After Mr. Frame is Wanda Cleveland. And then Faygo, you're after Wanda.
Thank you for hearing me. There are a lot of seniors out in the community that are scared because they're going to end up the same as I am. That is homeless.
Will you get a little closer to the microphone, ma'am, so we can hear you? Just get closer to the microphone so we can hear you speak? Yes, there you go.
There are a lot that are going to end up the same as I am. That's homeless, not because of anything we did, but because of basic laws in this community, which allow seniors to be targeted and moved out of their apartments. One of them is you can get anybody out of any apartment regardless of a lease, regardless of any contract, by giving them 60 days notice, and that is without cost. And they have to move. They don't have a choice. The other one is you allow a 9% increase per year on any rental property. My Social Security in the past four years hasn't gone up 9%, but my landlady doesn't even have to raise it on the entire apartment. They can raise my 9%, the person next to me 2%, and that is considered non-discriminatory. So what you're doing is implementing laws that are actually going to end up with seniors that are becoming homeless, and I've meant seniors that are about to become homeless. You need to look at those laws. You need to look at that, because you're going to have more than me out there. They're out there. They just haven't stepped forward.
Thank you so much, Ms. Spurling. Before Mr. Frame comes up, I'll remind the public to use non-vocalizations to support the candidates, the speakers. Mr. Frame?
Hello again. Okay, I got a whole page here, of course. One thing that saddens me is all the solutions that are out there, just sitting there waiting to be done, and that are ignored by our current representation. One thing I see almost more than homeless people on the street are signs that say available on them. We have so many buildings that are available for retail, for use. They've been collecting dust for years now. There's an empty hostess factory over there. There's an empty railroad yard. There's an empty Arco Arena. There's empty office buildings all over the place, empty apartment buildings right over there. Why can't we use some of these empty buildings to house people? In addition, we have a plethora of vacant lots, nice lush green vacant lots, too, but they're surrounded by fences. You can't get in them. There's, they're all over the place, and it'd be a perfect spot to, you know, make a tent city legal, so people don't die when their tents are taken away. So tied, tied to that is you should repeal the no camping ordinance, because it does kill people. It stifles creativity. We could, if we were allowed to shelter ourselves, we could shelter ourselves. We don't need your help. Just let us shelter ourselves, you know? Also, the police are wasting a lot of resources enforcing this no camping ordinance while, of course, we still remain the hub of child trafficking, according to the FBI. Okay, let's hire the homeless and jobless, our homeless and jobless, to pick up the trash in this city?
Yes.
Because there's a lot of trash in this city. I wanted to talk on number seven, but I wasn't allowed to. I am opposed to a nearly $2 million helicopter for the police, because we do have less than $100,000 dedicated to the investigation of human trafficking.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wanda Cleveland.
Well, what I understand with people talking here, that there are people up here on the board that are not being honest in court. You know, you were voted in, and each and every one of you can be voted out, and we can work as hard as it takes to get rid of you. You want, you want to do what you want to do, well, you expect to be thrown out of this board. Elk Grove gave me three minutes and respect. You give me two minutes and no respect. Our homeless are on the street. They're dying on a daily basis. Yes, you opened a 200-bed place. We have 13,000 people on the street. 200 doesn't do anything. When are you guys going to step up to this plate and do something? You guys shut, Mr., our people down here, don't let them talk, and don't give us respect. And you want us to stand here, and you guys want to tell us to shut up. We're not allowed to discuss anything. I ain't never been into a city council meeting, ever, in any place that has had so much control as you guys have. And you know what? If you don't want your people to be angry with you, then start listening to them. The business world is going to be there. They need to make money. Stop putting money that they're giving you in your back pocket. It's time for our people.
Thank you for your comments, Faygo.
So, once again, I'm going to have to address the fact that this city council does not represent the citizens. Repeatedly, the citizens come in with demands that are actually for the better good of the public. And repeatedly, we see nothing actually being done that the people actually want. You'll get a watered-down version occasionally of something the people wanted, or overpriced way of doing something that could have been done much cheaper, but, you know, we gotta make sure our business friends get the contracts. And then we see anything that the business districts want gets catered to immediately. No questions, no anything, including the conflict of interests of, you know, the business districts telling you not to do, allow the churches to shelter the homeless, even though you are all on these boards, you and your staff are on the boards and directors of these business districts. That send a letter to you telling you not to do what you're telling the public you're trying to do. That is a major conflict of interests. It shows the public that you really don't give a dang about us. I mean, you're elected to represent the public, not the business interests. We know you like, you guys like getting rich. I mean, you just gave yourself a raise, even though you fought against giving the community a raise. And so far as your little cleanup program that you're hiring homeless people to do, a $20 gift card is not worth the amount of work that they're doing. How about you pay them a living wage instead of a little $20 gift card? How about you start addressing police brutality? How about instead of trying to tone police, the public that you fail to represent, you actually pay attention to what we're saying. Pay attention to why people are getting so angry and frustrated with you. Pay attention to the fact that you are literally leading people to death. You're putting elderly people out on the streets so that your business buddies can get rich. How about you start actually caring about the citizens instead? We don't need more dog parks. We don't need a streetcar. We don't need an arena. We don't need an All-Star game. What we need is a city council that shows respect to its public.
Faygo, thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
A city council that asks you questions.
Thank you for your comments. Pastor Gainsborough, Pastor Gainsborough, you're up. After Pastor Gainsborough, Robert Copeland, and then Mr. Frederick Gale after Robert.
We get the overhead, please. We're all heartbroken over what happened there, and the state of our nation, and our state, and our city. But I want to commend you before I throw a little fire on things that that need to be heated up. Thursday night, the midpoint progress report for the first Sacramento winter triage shelter was a success. I commend you all for that, and the mayor. Over 200 people are sheltered. One 40-years-homeless veteran that was placed in permanent housing had to set up his tent in his apartment in order to acclimatize, but that was progress for him. The mayor's talking about the need for at least three triage shelters with 600 beds. He needs you to stand up with him, not even to be passive or neutral. Vehicle burglary dropped in two months, according to the police, by 300% from 21 to 6 in the area of the triage shelter. Larceny thefts dropped in half from 14 to 7. Vandalism dropped in half. Weapons violations dropped in half. As the time is running out here, Adam Silver, if he is told that the Sacramento wants an NBA bid, and two homeless are dying every week, and you're doing nothing to provide an immediate shelter every night for those sleeping out there tonight.
Thank you for your comments.
You've got to set up something immediately, immediately.
Robert Copeland. After Mr. Copeland is Mr. Gale, and then after Mr. Gale is Mary Tappel.
City Council can't even follow its own rules. Consent comes after public comment. And Eric Frame should have been able to speak on consent. Why wasn't he?
Mr. Copeland, the rules allow for the agenda to be reordered at the chair.
You should have told us ahead of time, and don't interrupt. I mean, I talked to Rick James after the RT board meeting last week. He said I'm not like, a lot nice over there, that I'm over here. You know why? I get treated better over there, even if some of you aren't that bored. I mean, this city council is a joke, and if there's a recall election against my own city council, I'm bored. And I live in District 4. So that's the vice mayor. You're not doing your job. None of you doing your jobs. One thing we need is rat control, just cause infections. I don't see none of you fighting for that or for the regular people. This city council is a joke. But back to the change of consent, you should have told us ahead of time. So people get into a consent slips, speaker slips, and you didn't do it. That is a neglect on your part, not on ours. You are a joke. This, I was right about my city council member. He used to be recalled. And I think a lot of us would agree with that. You hear me, Steve Hansen? Do you hear me? You should be recalled. Next time, if you run for any other office or next election on the city council, I'm not voting for you. I'm going to vote for a person against you because you are a joke. And where's Mayor Steiberg? I mean, is it on public business? So I don't want you going back and going to get a coffee. Only time you should go back there is go to the restroom or on real emergencies, not when you feel like it.
Mr. Copeland, thank you for your comments. It's time for our next speaker, Mr. Gale. After Mr. Gale is Mary Tappel. After Ms. Tappel is Mac Worthy. After Mac is Trina Allen. Mr. Gale, you had it? Oh, no, the other way. There you go. We can zoom out. There we go.
I, Frederick Gale, I live in North Highlands. And I lived at South Jackson and Thurmond Street for quite some time. Morton Kane, they'll ride down the street from me, fraternity brother, what have you. But the night was, I was in the B, the founder of the Tower Records. It was a racial kind of story, a person who'd never gave up in spite of failures. And I would love to see Solomon, Rush Solomon, when he meet his maker. It will be interesting. He lived a great life, great life, great entrepreneur. Jesse Penny, Sears, Maces, Sam Walton, in that mode. We still have hope, and the citizen can have great hope. And thank you for the time of thinking of Rush Solomon, a great American and a great world-type person who had great influence in economics all over the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gale, for your comments. Mary Tappel. After Ms. Tappel is Mac Worthy.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to once again emphasize that our I'm here to once again emphasize that our, our police chief, Chief Daniel Hahn, needs to be referred to in public always as, as our police chief. He's been a police chief for well over eight years because he was a police chief in, in the city of Roseville. I'm one of those people who is directly benefited by his work as a captain in the north area when he was the north area commander. And it was really good community policing that he led back then, including a whole lot of volunteer hours put in by officers when this, the awful series of armed robberies occurred in North Natomas largely, that also included kidnappings and some sexual assaults. And I, I was the only one that I heard of a reported attack of this, by the same diminished group of young people. Most of them were already in jail, thanks to the good volunteer efforts of a lot of the police, plus all of the paid efforts. And because they, a lot of them were in jail, the ones who, who attacked me in my driveway, July 5th, although I live in Hagen, when no, not very close to North Natomas at all, I remembered what I had heard from Captain Hahn and then Lieutenant Gardner, who later became Captain Gardner, about how, how you need to keep in mind that there were some kidnappings, so I knew to walk away from my car, leave the people, the one person with the gun and the other person who was acting as a lookout for him, who by the way was mainly white-blooded. He was the only one I heard reported as mainly being of white blood. But anyway, there, they did come away from my car with me and heaven knows what would have happened if my husband then wasn't able to see me and phone in and also if I had forgotten that there were kidnappings. But I really benefited being recently reminded by then-Captain Hahn, now Chief Hahn's big public meeting for largely people in the north area. And I just want you to keep in mind, when you do allocate, make your hard budget decisions, equal, equal rights for all people and equal in, in our public places.
Thank you, Ms. Tappel.
Thank you.
Mr. Worthy, you're up. After Mr. Worthy is Trina Allen and then Frank Topping.
Thanks a lot. I use this space to try to help educate my people on what have happened. I've been here since December the 13th, 1960. I was in the building for 44 years. And employment situation here is critical. You only got 500,000 people here and black people is about 13%. But you've got people that work for the police department and fire department, the best jobs that don't even live in the city. I knew when you had to live in the city to work for the city. There's things that you're gonna have to change. Property tax. You hadn't told these people, educated them on property taxes. People think because they get a house, they owe it to them. That could be one of the worst things you had, is to own a house. In a city such as this one, as depend on nonprofit organizations and nonprofit organizations own your biggest utility business in the town, the city of Sacramento. That's where you make your mistakes at. You're gonna have to do something about this situation to employ people. When we talk about minorities, executive jobs, there is no executive jobs. You have to wait till somebody die. As the city of Sacramento. And when we talk about property tax, tell them what is the value of de-appreciation on rental and leased property. It's what you done as a city on 11% of all property tax. You bought everything that the bank owned and puts in your pocket and now you wanna sell it and make a profit. And these people don't even know about that. This should be a moratorium on everything you bought, that you can't sell it over 10% of what you bought it for. And these people can't see that, but job scan can see that. When we look at the city knowledge of business, we don't have it in the minority, which we Negroes like me did not study, business administration. Be tax people. We studied sociology, psychology, and black history, so we can't compete that. I would like to see you set up an economic development training program. And I would be the, on one side of it and let people know what they need.
Mr. Worthy, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Trina Allen. And after Ms. Allen is Frank Topping. And then our last speaker on matters not on the agenda is Allegra Taylor.
Hello, my name is Trina Allen and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers shouldn't be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence in our community. Any action the city makes that uses tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community that it serves. As a voting member of the Sacramento County community here in my demands, Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Trainings need to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of training curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding and trainings need to be overseen and monitored by the community members that have experiences relevant to the training. In 100 years, you will be remembered for your actions, just as those who came before you are now. You allocate funds to the highest bidder while unhoused folks die in the streets. You deny survival cities and survival gear as you purchase helicopters and million-dollar paddy wagons that are used against us for your police department, even as they have proven themselves unable to prevent their officers from killing and/or beating black community members. Toilets, housing, shelter, just cause evictions, rent control, land trust, union jobs, these should be your priorities. Your people should be your priority. Community leaders before you were held back from real change, just as you are now. But make no mistake, we judge them for what they upheld, just as we judge you now. You are the monsters of our time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Allen. Mr. Topping, Mr. Topping, you're up next. And then our final speaker is Allegra Taylor. Mr. Topping, thank you for being here. Can we have the overhead, Madam Clerk?
Forgive me if I'm getting a crook in my neck. I'm used to seeing the District 4 individual a couple of seats over. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Time for a little commercial from Sacramento County. A lot of people have wondered what the delay has been in the money coming out from the Mental Health Services Act. Actually, it's not a delay at all. Strongly built in to the Mental Health Services Act is a provision for very serious community review. We have, on the addition of additional services for, from the Mental Health Services Act for our homeless, we have held three work groups on the issue mandated by the Steering Committee. And as a Steering Committee member, it was a pleasure to attend those. However, taking it back to the Steering Committee, all of a sudden, we had a guest speaker, Mayor Darryl Steinberg, and Supervisor Kennedy popped in unannounced. I usually came to the meeting with an individual giving me a ride that said he had to go to the ER. And it was raining cats and dogs, so I couldn't get in my chair and, and leave. I tried, but when I hit the front door, it was raining to beat the ban. Okay, this is a notice of tomorrow. The next sequence is a review by the Mental Health Board that the Steering Committee has turned it over to, as required. And that hearing will be at 7,001 East Parkway, 6:00 PM. That's right on Florin Road, just off of Florin Road, right by Home Depot.
Topping, thank you for your comments. Thank you for being here, it's good to see you. Our last speaker is Allegra Taylor. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. So as a south area community advocate, I've been in the south area advocating on behalf of homeless veterans and returning citizens for the past 10 years. We are housing veterans and returning citizens in District 6. I am a homeowner in District 7, and I'm advocating for a resident in District 8. My question is, when there are needs for jobs in our area and there is a, a entity that wants to provide over 200 jobs in that area, why would you vote no for that? I visited the area where Safeway wanted to locate and provide those jobs for Oak Park, which would also benefit Fruit Ridge Manor residents, where we house, house veterans and returning citizens. Looks like a prime location. A prime location, so why vote no on that? So what is it? In South Sacramento, we can have entities that will provide what? No housing, no jobs. What is it that, that you guys are doing for the people in South Sacramento? You don't want to provide housing for us. You put out a 75-year-old man, a homeowner, out of his home in South Sacramento. You leave that homeowner sitting on the side of the curb to fend for himself. You do that in South Sacramento. But will you do it in Land Park? Will you do it in Fair Oaks? Huh? Where are you? Huh? You guys need to reconsider. You need to consider we, the people. It is we, the people, that got you sitting in them privileged seats that you're sitting in. Those are privileged seats. How many of you live in the areas that you claim to represent? You don't wanna see jobs in the South Sacramento? Gera, Rick Jennings, Carr. We need jobs. We need jobs in South Sacramento. We need Safeway in South Sacramento. We don't need anything else that's coming in under some private label to claim that they're there to do something for our community. We know you don't care about our community. You showed us that over and over and over again.
Well, we, our rules require a speaker slip to be turned in before we start the item. We have one last speaker, and I'd like to invite Ms. Elizabeth McDaniel up to give a comment on matters not on the agenda.
Okay, I need the overhead, please. This is, this is basically a picture that's in my maintenance, uh-oh, let me try to get it, come blow up a little bit, okay. It's one eye, okay? Semi, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. This is what's in the maintenance shed at Point Natomas Apartments, which is one of the three properties owned or managed by Reliant Property Management here in Sacramento. I'm here to inform the city of Sacramento of the systematic networking assault on its residents, the state and nationwide, and an agenda to make folks homeless. Note, the, the eye has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 lashes, representing the eight districts here in Sacramento. The two letters I sent to the city council over the past years, couple of years, they were true and without resolve. The latest assault against me, designed to destroy my very existence and livelihood, was during the quote-unquote "Labor Day" weekend. My home was burglarized and of, all of my personal documents were taken and altered, including but not limited to private PIN codes attached to my retirement, retirement documentation, life insurance policies, bank statement, medical information, tax withholdings, social security stuff was changed, emails. All of these things were altered. For what reason? Only God knows. So I'm gonna let the city council judge on this situation. Is this fact or fiction? This is in Jeff Harris's District 3. And this is my March 3rd, 3/6/2018 feedback to what happened to me on June the 6th, since they play with numbers, in 2014 in Series, California, where I was thrown to the ground and was violated by quote-unquote "eight cops" who went through my car with blue gloves and took 493 pictures and photos of friends and family. Yeah, a lot of relatives, couple of relatives have passed.
Daniel, your time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's God's, it's God's grace that he has allowed me to live, to declare these things in the presence of you all. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. We, we have two items remaining on the agenda for tonight. One has one speaker on it, and I know that most of you are here for the item related to the Franklin Day Reporting Center. But we'll just really quickly do this item number 19. Is Shelley Banks Robinson available? Madam Clerk, will you read the item?
Item number 19 is the city attorney appointment and contract.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Banks Robinson. Mr. Mac Worthy, would you like to?
Oh.
Yep. Mr. Mac, do you have your comments ready?
On this item, I was surprised to see it on there, in which I had, I don't oppose the city council this idea of what I've seen here over the three years. Reason I said Mr. Ruiak, he sees some things too. Now the other woman.
The mic is, Mr. Worthy, can you speak up just a little bit?
And the other lady, the other man was here, we talked. And you know, the lady that's coming on now, I wish her luck because this city's in a bad situation. This city spent out 20, 20-some million dollars about the arena in legal fees outside of the city. Now you got some good people on that staff to help this woman straighten this thing out. I think she'll be underpaid. As the last guy left here, he is underpaid. I think he's underpaid and have, direct them to talk to some of us when these cases go to court. We can stand up and testify, as what we know too, about misleading the public on some funds being used here in the city and still being used or misusing funds. This is the reason I ask people, the sales tax, vote it down. Vote the sales tax down until they come to a conclusion to, there's homeless people because you are pimping those people for funds. And that's gonna be for a long time. You know you cannot house those people overnight. Dorserie is, you gonna relocate 800 people, where you gonna put them? And you can't house these homeless people. This is where you classifying the people by your income and who you are. Where the average disability out there is $600. Go and ask Fisher Loeb who is cashing that check. Somebody cashing that check in this town. And this thing about a triage, you got no control over triages when who gonna be in there and who not gonna be in there. So this is what I'm wanting to talk to this attorney about. Be aware when this type of stuff come up, she bring it out to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Councilmember Carr?
No more speakers?
No more speakers.
I move to open and close the public hearing.
No, this is on the city attorney contract, number 19. There's no public hearing. But move the item. I hear a motion to approve the item. A second by everybody on the left side of the dais. We'll give it to Mr. Jennings because he blinked first. All right, no one else signed up to speak? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Onto item number 18, the third-party appeal for the Franklin Day Reporting Center. We have 24 signed up to speak on this item. We have 17 in favor and seven opposed. We'll have a staff presentation, I believe, and then we'll give the appellant a reasonable time to give their arguments and then the applicant will have a reasonable amount of time to respond. 17 in favor of the appeal, I believe. Or it, it gets confusing on these things, so we'll have to, when we get to public comment, we'll have to work out whether you're here to support the appeal or to support, which is to deny the project or to support the Day Center, which approves the project. And it's just the, this land use stuff can be a little bit complicated. But when we get to the public comment, we'll work to clarify that and we'll get going. Anyway, let's have the staff presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Vice Mayor Hanson and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Garrett Norman, I am the project planner for the Franklin Day Reporting Center. This project is located at 7,000 Franklin Boulevard and is within the light industrial or M1S zone. The proposed project is part of a larger five-acre office park that includes a variety of professional medical offices and other similar services. The request before you this evening is for a conditional use permit to operate a correctional facility or federal parolee day reporting center in a portion of an existing 16,000-square-foot building. No exterior modifications are proposed with this project. The applicant has indicated that the day reporting center will provide adult participants who have committed federal offenses with treatment and programs to help with societal rehabilitation. This project was approved by the Planning and Design Commission on December 7th, 2017. The request is now before the city council on a third-party appeal from a community member. The appeal expressed concerns that the proposed use is inconsistent with development, progress, and the area, and that the use is too close to public schools and residential. Staff has considered the comments of the appeal and other community comments received during the entitlement process, and in our analysis finds that the proposed project is located in a suitable area by being set within the existing office park. And also, the office park is further separated by Franklin Boulevard, creating additional separation from the closest residential uses. from the closest residential uses. Furthermore, the project has been conditioned to ensure the project remains a small and manageable operation by capping the maximum number of program participants to fifty and limiting the maximum number of participants allowed to visit the facility at any given time to fifteen. Additionally, the police department has reviewed the project and provided conditions that address physical and operational security. Staff supports the project because it is consistent with general plan policy by diversifying land uses in a centrally located area in Sacramento and is conditioned to require a good neighbor policy that requires continual interaction with the adjacent neighborhood and business associations. Staff recommends the city council deny the appeal and approve the project, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings of fact listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Now, again, because this is an appeal from a citizen, the citizen is the next person who will give a chance to speak, and that's Effie Gant, if Effie is here. Ms. Gant, thank you. And the rules give you a reasonable amount of time. We'll start with four or five minutes, and if we need to give you more, we'll go further.
Good evening to our vice mayor and all of our city councilmen. The opposed appeal requests I made as an advocate for the Hampton Station community also includes the Sacramento City Unified School District, Polack Ranch Community, Meadowview Community, and surrounding communities, some that are low-income and families in distress because of the lack of positive opportunities of education, health, jobs, and housing. Some of these issues are already existing in our schools, communities, and in District The use or to permit or give a permit to conditional permit for a payroll check-in facility at 7,000 Franklin Boulevard, we view as absolutely inconsiderate for the public safety of the students of the nearby public schools. The nearby public schools are Luther Burbank High School, Farm Bacon Middle School, Bowling Green Elementary School. The Sacramento City Unified School District, rather, sent a letter opposing to the permit for the operating of the parolee check-in center, saying they are extremely concerned for the safety and the well-being of his students attending the nearby schools. This letter was sent to the City Planning Commission pertaining to the concern for the public safety of students. We, the parents, the teachers, the advocates, the authoritarian leaders in our community, that support and opposes an appeal wholeheartedly for public safety, for our youth in our schools and in our communities. We make this appeal to you to consider, as our city officials, the cause and effect that will happen if this permit is passed to operate so closely to our schools and communities. The youth at the schools become victims of crimes that reoccur often when some of the parolees are not successful in the reentry program designed to help them re-enter society. Cause again, in effect, focusing in on what GEO reported, federal offenses. The offenses of federal parolees that are out on parole or coming out on parole, the parolees that will participate in the program if the permit is passed, are former convicts, convicted of formal crimes they committed. Some were convicted of child molestation, kidnapping, child pornography, bank robbery, fraud, carjacking, and other federal crimes. Reinvestment, cause and effect. The GEO facility offers no positive investment to our schools or community, only public unsafety and exposure to crime that reoccur as our youth become victims of parolees that will break the law again. We cannot bury our heads in the sand. We have buried our heads in the sand long enough, so therefore that's why so much murdering is taking place in our public schools. Someone has to stand up. Only one person stood up and took the prayer out of school. So we're saying we are going to stand up for the safety of our youth and our communities.
Ms. Gant, the five minutes I gave you is up. I added one more minute.
Can I just...
But however much time I give you, I give to the applicant, so...
Can I say more?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay. Am I talking too loud? I'm a little excited.
No, go for it. Your honor, roll.
GEO offers no programs for better opportunities for our youth, our communities, and no positive training programs that will bring in education and creativity to the diversity in our schools or community. GEO presence will pull down property value of new homes that was built in our communities and values also of older homes if owners wish to sell their homes. Cause and effect again, GEO is wholly inconsistent with the progress viewed as taking place in the region. For context, please consider the following occurrence. The old foreign mall, once considered poorly managed, blighted, blocked, is emerging, reemerging slowly but surely as a key destination for banking, grocery, and the arrival of three Walmart neighborhood markets. The Delta Shores Development, which was recently approved by the Planning and Design Mission in May of 2015.
Gant? I'm sorry. We should give the applicant a reasonable amount of time, and then we can have our public comment and continue debating it unless you wish to keep going.
Well, we are believing and trusting in God. Our symbol on our revenue says we trust in God as a nation. So we are trusting in God that you all support us and vote pertaining to the public safety of our children in our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Gant. Is there somebody present to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please come up and introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rachel Kinsler, Regional Business Development Director for GEO Reentry Services, and I am the applicant on the project. And I won't go into too much detail here. I just want to go over a few key points. Well, okay, probably more than a few, but some key points. So the impetus for this project is actually came about about three years ago under the prior federal administration. And the goal here was for those that are nonviolent, non-serious offenders who have been held in federal institutions, federal correctional institutions, to be able to be released back to their communities and their families so that they can get the rehabilitative programs, services, jobs, and kind of get back on track in their lives with a realization that we needed less incarceration and more rehabilitation. And that's really where this all came from. About ten years ago, the Federal Bureau of Prisons attempted to locate a residential reentry center in Sacramento and was unsuccessful, and then recognized that there was this... There's still this need in the Sacramento area, and the closest programs are in either San Francisco, Oakland, or Fresno. So when they knew they couldn't cite a residential center, they decided, let's see if we can do a day reporting center so that we can still get programs and services to these participants that are living in Sacramento. The folks that would come to this program are here because Sacramento is their community of origin. This is where they were before they got in trouble. This is where they're coming back to upon release. The advantage of this program is that they get to release just a little bit early if they are nonviolent, non-serious, and deemed suitable for community placement based on where the program is located, also based on the types of whatever it is that got them inside. If they are able to do that, then they will come to the program, and they'll be there for about three to six months. And this is really at the end of their supervision and their time under the jurisdiction of the Federal Bureau of Prisons, and so it's an opportunity for them to say, okay, I know I'm serious, I've proven that I can be compliant, and that I can do this, and now I just need the extra tools to help me be successful. As I mentioned, there are only thirty participants in the program at any given time, meaning not onsite, but total. We schedule, as you can see from above, we are open evenings and weekends to accommodate work schedules. Employment programming is only one of the many programs that we provide in the Day Reporting Center, and we work with them to really focus on not only how do they get a job, but how do they keep a job? And not just giving them one, but if they have the tools to do that, then when they're done with that supervision and when they're done with this program, then they can continue to do that for the rest of their lives and help reduce the likelihood that they'll get back involved in the system. Additionally, our services include transitional skills, individual counseling, cognitive behavioral programs, and other connections to community partners. I'll move along quickly for the sake of time, hoping this works. So there's been a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about GEO Reentry Services. GEO Reentry Services has been providing residential reentry and day reporting or community non-residential reentry services for more than thirty years. We do this, and we do a very good job. We commit a lot of resources to it. Our focus is on providing evidence-based services and programs. We do it for both... We provide services for federal, state, and county jurisdictions, and we invest very heavily in our programs with staff training, research department outcomes, evaluation, and contract compliance monitoring that we sponsor and support ourselves. And we're experienced industry leaders. We currently operate over twenty-five day reporting centers in California alone, not including those that we operate across the country. And we also operate five residential reentry centers, four of them serving this very same population of Federal Bureau of Prisons folks that are coming out of the institution. So it really was a good fit to say, okay, we are the right provider, because we're extras not only in day reporting, but also in working with this population. To give you an example of that, you'll see on the screen that these are some outcomes. We operate the two Federal Bureau of Prisons programs in the Bay Area. We have eighty percent of our program participants, which for those who know reentry, you know that's a significant number, eighty percent of those folks successfully complete our program. Working with our participants in the program, we have created two-hundred-and-forty jobs just last year alone. And there has been a concern that we will bring new crime into the area by having this program. We've had one percent of our program participants commit any type of new law violation whatsoever in the program, and none of those occurred at or near our facilities or were related to something that could not or would not have otherwise happened in their community. Onto the next slide. We talked a little bit about the locations. We are committed to quality and to compliance and making sure we evaluate our outcomes. And so that includes, you'll see there, that's just one of our county programs where we have demonstrated a forty-three percent reduction in recidivism for those participating in our programs. Our offices are located office and professional use. As I mentioned, we have lots of day reporting centers. This is just two of them right here. The bottom is our Santa Ana program, and the other one at the bottom left, and the right is our Ventura County program. They are often in business parks, office buildings, and they are always in urban areas and near public transportation, which were all considerations for this location. Participants are not allowed to loiter at or near our facilities. We have very clear facility rules, and those include not only no loitering, no littering, but also pro-social modeling, so that we are creating for them an environment whereby we treat them the way we expect them to treat us, as well as how we expect them to treat people in the community. So we find that it's... They've never felt like they've been treated more respectfully, and they then exhibit that behavior in the community. And I think you'll see that from many of our participant speakers who are here this evening. And we always have a professional and therapeutic environment. We know that our neighbors feel that we make our community safer because of the accountability and awareness of our programs and what's around us.
Just one second. Just folks from the audience, while the appellant was speaking, we were all very respectful. We're gonna be respectful of people regardless of their position and listen and have a civil discourse, please. Please continue.
Thank you. So this is the site. This is the floor plan for the site. And the reason I think it's important for you to see this is because it really is just an office use. Now, this is more offices than we need, but this actual facility that we propose, we did an extensive real estate search within the city limits of Sacramento, because that's what was required of the RFP for this service, and looked at a lot of factors, including the urban corridor, access to public transportation, parking, the facility layout. So the availability, the CUP process is lengthy, so it requires quite a bit of time, someone who's willing to keep a space available for quite a bit of time. All of those things met this 7,000 Franklin location. And the other thing that really had this work and has this space require virtually no tenant improvements or building permits is that it was a prior day reporting center. In fact, the sign is still on the door. It was a day reporting center for adults at that location up until just a couple of years ago.
Can we have you wrap up soon, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. And when talking with probation, they have felt that it was a benefit to have them there because they helped with lighting, with helping with homeless populations, so on and so forth. In wrapping up and really talking about our participants, there's been a lot of talk about what this is. These are... These participants are nonviolent, non-serious. They already have housing that's been verified in the community in Sacramento. They are neighbors. They are... They have demonstrated long-term compliance for two years or more before they get in the program. And even prior to being cited at the program, the bureau is aware of all of any community concerns that are there, and they make a determination at that point to only place those that are appropriate for community placement in that program and have the greatest likelihood of success. And then I think, you know, lastly, we are committed to being a good neighbor. We know that the other thing this program provides is increased accountability, because these folks don't have to go and report somewhere else in Fresno or San Francisco. They actually would get twenty-four-seven electronic monitoring plus their programming, and it would all be right here. And we are committed to being a good neighbor and a good community partner. We are absolutely willing to do community events, volunteer activities. We do this often, as well as the community advisory board.
Thank you. Okay. We're all working together here.
Thank you.
All of us.
Done.
Thank you for your comments. We're gonna get into the public comment now. I think because it is a little confusing and about whether you're supporting the appeal to deny the project or opposing the appeal to support the project, that I just want to make sure that we clarify that. So I'm gonna ask that if you're here to support the appeal and deny the project, that you just stand for a moment so we can record you. We're gonna also do that for the other side, and then we'll call the speakers, just so that will help the council understand...
Those that support, you want to stand.
Yeah, so if you...
Those that support, you want to stand.
So if you came here because Ms. Gant appealed this project and you support her position in denying the reporting center, please just stand for a second. Thank you for standing. Please take your seat again. If you're here to support the project but to deny the appeal, please stand.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, please take your seats. We tried to figure out how to arrange the public comment. Hold on. We tried... Normally, in a situation like this, we'd have the people opposed testify first, and the people in support testify second. But because the sheets may be mixed up, we'll just have the clerk call the sheets in the order that we have. order that we have.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk.
The first speaker is Robert Copeland, then Artelius Aiken, and then Rebecca Person.
I have a few questions. Was there any town hall meetings on this project?
No.
No?
No.
Uh...
Just, just, the comments have to be directed at the council.
I am not directing to the...
And no...
City Council.
Public response, please.
Uh... Was there any better sites than Land Park or the fabulous 40s they could have picked? Why always in the poorer neighborhoods they want to put something like this? Why not in the fabulous 40s?
Yes.
Or in the Land Park or in the richer neighborhoods in each of your districts? Did we ask the people that have office space, are currently there, how they feel? I bet not. Because I know one of the places that ACE has their office in that complex. And let's just say, I wouldn't want to have anybody there because the landlord won't fix the problems because they've got a big old hole in the ceiling and the landlord won't fix it. Did they know about that when they applied at that location? I bet they didn't. I don't think they done their adequate, do homework and find a best site. And I know there's residential properties real close to that location. Because I went canvassing there one time, a couple times, when, as part of ACE. And they're rather large complexes, like 300 units. Real large complex. I bet they, did we ask the people that live in that neighborhood? No.
No.
So they want to put them in the poorer neighborhoods and I bet the city council is going to approve this over the objections of their, of the neighbors in that district or the neighborhood. Do your homework first. This project, it may not be a good ideal, but is there any security?
Mr. Copeland, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Artelius Aiken, then Rebecca Person.
Welcome, Ms. Aiken.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Artelius Aikens and I want everyone to know that not only am I a resident of this community, initially I wanted to address Larry Carr. There's a, there's a great number on this side for GEO. I would like to know, how many of you actually live in our community?
Ma'am, please address, ma'am, please address your comments to the council.
Okay, so anyways, point proven, point proven, the majority doesn't even live in our community, but they want to bring in this million, billion dollar project. If you do the statistics, the federal government spends billions of dollars annually to build prisons. Funding is allocated to each state and each city. But when the inmates get out, ask me how I know? Because I have engaged, I have worked with inmates who have done 10 and 20 years incarceration. And when they get out, the resources, the counseling that Ms. GEO director over here is talking about are not available to them. They don't have financial resources. They don't have appropriate housing and they can't afford it. Okay? This is our reality district council members in dealing with this situation. Not only has it not been researched thoroughly, okay? In regards, are you opposed or are you for this project?
Ma'am, ma'am, please address your comments to me and the council.
Okay, anyways, okay, long story short, Larry, the community, the community as a whole, sir, in respect to all of you, I'm not trying to disrespect nobody, I'm gonna keep it real. We're dealing with real people. We are dealing with real lives. Larry, we are dealing with a real situation. And many of us are upset about this because we feel it has not been well sought out. The community was not well informed.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, next.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Person and then Macalworthy.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Person. I'm a leader with Sacramento Act and with South Sacramento Village. GEO Care is a subsidiary of GEO Group, one of the largest for prison profit companies in the country. Those who have profited from incarcerating our neighbors and family members should not be given the responsibility for our healing. To do so, we would ignore the damage that mass incarceration has caused our community. We want a day reporting center that is run by local organizations whose interest is in healing the community. We want your no vote on placing a GEO Care-led day program, a no vote on placing a GEO Care-led day reporting facility in South Sacramento. District 8, Medaview, Valley High, Oak Park, South Sacramento, we're not dumping grounds for GEO. Okay? We have enough issues. Let's put this in the bad 40s. Let's put this in Natomas. Let's put this, there's other, you know, come on, just quit dumping on us. We have enough issues that we have to work on in healing in our communities that we do not need this facility in our community. And only, of all those people that stood up, and only three or four only live in our community. I live in Medaview. We need you to do the right thing for our community and quit throwing garbage on us.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Macworthy and then Tia Pope. So Macworthy, Tia Pope, then Allegra Taylor, then Jesse Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
This one, you should have heard tonight because you all ain't educated the people. You all hadn't educated the people on this issue. Because see, I've been getting some bad information, different information. Now, just, well, I gather the same organization won't this, want this thing, oppose these kids getting out of jail. Now, when we look at what happened here under the previous administration, some of y'all was here. St. John Church over here behind you got $600,000. Do the same thing that you said these people are going to do. Who are lying and who's not lying yet? I would say take it back and study this. You ain't got enough information. You ain't got enough information on this because I have worked with parolees and I let them know if you got federal parole, you can go anywhere in America you want to go. But I would basically advise you, do your time as you got and get out of there and go where you want to go. PG&E hires parolees and ex-cons to give them a maximum of $100,000 a year income. How much money that these kids going to get? Now, nobody talk them about child support. A kid I worked with in LA, right here, his first check, they took all of it, put it back child support. The kid's not going to still... Go back and study and tell the truth about this issue.
Yes.
Study and tell the truth. This is y'all's problem.
Tell the truth.
It's not the neighborhood. This is y'all's problem and not bringing the truth out here.
Yes, that's right.
Bring the truth out here and for both sides because I would never pin one against each other at a hearing. Unless it was a legal hearing, this is not a legal hearing. Only two legal hearings, a formal and an informal. And both sides can have a referee and subpoena who they want to. And you don't do that here. So take this thing back to basics and study.
Amen.
I just want to remind the audience to be respectful when people are speaking, not to call out and allow them to give their comments uninterrupted. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Tia Pope, Allegra Taylor, and then Jesse Reese.
Ms. Pope.
Tia Pope.
I don't see her. Let's go into the next speaker. Ms. Pope, welcome.
Hi. My name's Tia Pope. Thank you. And yes, I've been a resident of, in the Phoenix Park area. Also grew up in Oak Park, South Sacramento, been a little bit everywhere. But I just want to speak on this behalf that I just found out about this today, like three hours ago. I have a son that's going on the age of 13, you know what I mean? And I want to speak on the behalf of, you know, this whole program that's being set in between two schools. Okay? For one, that's not okay because all those little microaggressions is going to create a domino effect, which it seems like is being planted there so that, you know, they can accumulate, so more money can be accumulated for the prison facilities. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
It's not cool. My brother's been locked up since I was one and a half. I would never remember hugging him from inside the bars. You know what I'm saying? It's not ever going to be cool. On top of that, how much is that going to decrease the property tax in that community? Which is also going to have a domino effect, decreasing how much a person can get education. Decreasing education, decreasing awarenesses, is decreasing the economic stability.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? I strive every day as a single parent to take my son outside of communities, to take him to Karate Way in Elk Grove Grant Line. That's heck of far. You feel me? I ain't got gas like that. I got to go to school. I got to pay for parking. I just got my parking permit today. School started a long time ago. You know what I'm saying? By the end of the day, somebody asked my son to commit a crime one day, gave him some money because that person was in the community. Who put you in this community? Can we invent some things where they're not just coming and being placed because you want to say that you're helping them, but actually having some other varieties of retention programs that, hey, you can be placed over here because this program is over here. If this is your interest, then you can go over here and you can do this. Now, only on that top of that, there's so many liquor stores right there. They're going to walk right by those.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Pope.
So psychologically speaking, they're going to be having that anxiety to say, you know what, I'm going to stop right here and grab this.
Comments, your time is up. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Allegra Taylor and then Jesse Reese.
I would appreciate it if you guys make better considerations or we're going to bring them to the community.
Ma'am, Ms. Pope, your time is up.
I'm going to bring them to the community.
Thank you. Thank you. It's time for the next, it's time for the next speaker.
So here we go again, South Sacramento. Why is it that South Sacramento is targeted for such a thing as this? Like I said earlier, we've been housing homeless veterans and returning citizens in the Fruit Ridge Manor community for 10 years. And in that 10-year period, we've had conversations with several formerly incarcerated people. And I would like to read to you a statement of one of them that has an affiliation with GEO. I will not say his name. However, I had a personal experience with GEO Group. They are only in it for profit. And we're nothing but a roadblock for me to get, we're nothing but a roadblock for me getting acclimated back into society. This is the only ploy for profits. How can they care about a community if they aren't a part of the community and have no genuine concern for the people in the community? Now, we ran into one of the consultants for GEO out there and he was speaking to one of our people that was here that is opposing them and he lives in Southland Park. So I asked him, why didn't you put it in your area? He said he'd love to have it in his area. So, we can kind of fix two birds with one stone. Why don't the city council consider, since you don't want to give us jobs at Safeway in that lot, why don't you build a GEO Group there? When are you going to start adhering to your people? These are our concerns. I'm all for second chances. I am a part of the reinvestment coalition of Sacramento Act. I fight on behalf of our returning citizens every day. But this company that, that puts them in jail, now they want to say they want to come and turn around and put money into healing them? We don't trust them. We don't believe them. And they should not be allowed to make money on both ends of the spectrum. This is about money. That's all it's about.
Your comments. Thank you for your comments. Clerk, next speaker.
My next speaker is Jesse Reese, then Coralina Esert. After Coralina is Joe Gomez.
Good evening to the City Council. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak on this matter. My name is Jesse Reese, President of the Medaview Neighborhood Association. My thoughts concerning the day reporting center proposed location at 7,000 Franklin Boulevard should not move forward. We talk about justice for neighbors, justice for neighbors and justice for communities. Yes, communities have rights also. We talk about the proximity to schools. St. Patrick's Academy approximately three miles. Bowling Greens Elementary approximately two miles. Fern Bacon approximately 0.9 miles. Luther Birdbank School approximately 0.8 miles, et cetera. Businesses are within close proximity whereas alcohol could be purchased, which can cause more problems. Seems like when an individual first get out of confinement illegally, the first thing that come across their mind is alcohol and ladies. We do not want this to materialize in our community. Our community have enough challenges. The community has been on the upswing and we would like to keep it that way. We do not want, we do not need, we do not request any more additional challenges. To me, GEO Group, as I said in the past, is always trying to do things on the cheap. Find a building that already exists. Choose an area, as they say, close to traffic. On and on and on. GE states, GEO states that they want a day reporting center in Sacramento area. Well, I'm here to tell you that Sacramento is a lot larger than North and South area. There is a lot of empty land in the outlined areas where they could build their complex and do their own transporting. From what I understand, in other areas, they have declined GEO service. It was stated to me at the last meeting that the complex was sold before GEO could finalize the deal. We don't know that for a fact. Imagine owning property in that area. What would the value of your property be worth?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Coralina Esert, Joe Gomez, and then Charles Hughes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to clarify that I'm opposing the appeal. So if there's anybody else who wants to talk first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I am a resident of Sacramento. I have lived in the Center Parkway area where my children attended Charles Mack Elementary, which is near the proposed site. I am also the owner of E3 Speed here in Sacramento. In addition to being a Sacramento resident and business owner, I also work for GEO Reentry Services. I've been employed with GEO Reentry Services for six years. I have worked in the day reporting centers in San Joaquin.
Ma'am, please, please, please wait one second. So I know that there's very strong passions here and I can hear it, but I need those folks who disagree with whoever at the podium to treat them with the same respect that they did when you were speaking, which was they sat and they listened. So please do not call out, do not interrupt the speaker. We owe it to each other to be civil and to try to listen. So if you, if you continue to act out, unfortunately, we may have to ask you to leave. But we want to conduct this hearing in an appropriate way. Please continue, ma'am.
I am the program manager for the CDCR Solano Day Reporting Center. I am proud to work for a company that helps make our community safer and would be thrilled to see this program in Sacramento in which I live and raise my family. The participants that would be enrolled in Sacramento DRC live in Sacramento County whether the DRC is there or not. The participants are my neighbors. Their children go to school with my children and grandchildren. They are individuals we come into contact with daily. They're just not labeled an offender. The DRC provides a solution to changing lives, reducing recidivism, and impacting public safety. The DRC is a way to make our future better. As a Sacramento business owner, I would hire those who would have graduated the Sacramento DRC, as I'm aware of the hard work they have put into changing their lives. As a GEO reentry staff, I am always working towards making the community better. For example, in Stockton, our office participated in feeding the homeless. I would work side-by-side DRC participants each month, rain or shine, preparing, cooking, and handing out food to those less fortunate. This is just one of the many examples that we do in order to make the community better than when we found it. I would like to end with a saying from Martin Luther King Jr. "One of the great liabilities of history is that all too many people fail to remain awake through great periods of social change. Every society has its protectors of status quo and its fraternities of the indifferent who are notorious for sleeping through revelations."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Speaker is Joe Gomez, then Charles Hughes, and then Kenneth Knutson.
Here to support second chances and yes to reentry. My name is Joe Gomez and thank you for this opportunity. And honestly, thank, thank God for the opportunity that has been given to me by the CDCR to be able to come back into society because if it wasn't for GEO, if it wasn't for the parole system and the parole board and how they act with people because they really do want to help people, the only thing is that people need to want to make those changes in life. And honestly, you know, there might be so much criticism from wherever side it may come from or negativity, but the truth be told, if it wasn't for the rules and all these regulations that are made, if people would actually follow and actually do them, I mean, the communities would be great, no matter which side they're on. GEO has helped people... GEO has helped people, and so many people has helped me so, so far that now I could have my daughter, I could have all of my children given the opportunity. I don't, the first thing that came from, to my mind when I was let free was not, you know, any, how they were speaking about drugs and alcohol, because I made up my mind once the first, the first time I hit prison, that I was never, ever to touch those things or be affiliated with any of them, my old past. And thanks to GEO today, I could, I could say that because of them and because of the way I've made my choices, I could be a law-abiding citizen today and be with my family and be side-by-side right now with my daughter. And I don't know, all I could say is thank you for the rules and the regulations that are put, no matter what, because they do help people. Because if people really want to make the change, they will do it. They will follow the rules, and they will do everything in their power if they really want to make the changes. So it doesn't matter where their GEO is put, but they will help the community, no matter what.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Charles Hughes, then Kenneth Knutson, then Karen Graff.
Charles Hughes. And who is after that?
Charles Hughes, Kenneth Knutson, Karen Graff, and then Amanda Owens.
If you don't mind lining up behind the speaker so that we can get through the comments, we still have a significant number to go through. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Charles Hughes. I am currently a participant in the Napa DRC with GEO. My life prior to the DRC, I did not know how to live without drugs or a criminal mindset. I have been in and out of jail and prison for the last seven years. I could not break free from my drug addiction. While incarcerated, I was approached by two individuals that were enrolled in the DRC program. They convinced me that with an open mind, I may find a new way to live. Since that day, I have committed myself to change. With the full support of the staff at the DRC and the moral recognition training classes, I have learned to change my way of thinking and my behavior. By being honest with myself and learning to trust others, this has taught me a new way of life. I have been drug-free and without trouble for a year, which I had never thought to be possible. I am now able to create goals and achieve them. While in the program, I have not seen any issues with our community. In fact, it has lowered the recidivism rate. I believe if you were to consider this program, it would be a great benefit to your community.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Speaker is Kenneth Knutson, then Karen Graff, and Amanda Owens.
Ms. Graff and Owens, could you please line up? Yeah, thanks.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Knutson. I'm a current participant in the GEO Reentry Program. I have been in there since September 11th. I am currently in the last phase of the program. It has changed my life. Next month, the 7th, I'll have a year cleanse over. Due to the program, everybody respects me there as a client. It has changed the way I think, it has changed the way I live my life today. I am proud to say that I have my family back, and I have my wife. Twenty-eight years, I had used drugs and alcohol and crime, been in and out of jail and prison. For the first time in my life, I actually can say I'm a good father and a husband and a grandfather to two grandbabies that I have a custody of. So I want to thank GEO Program for giving me the chance to be a client for them and to prove to them that this program works. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Karen Graff, then Amanda Owens, then Emmanuel Barr.
And will the next speakers just line up, and we'll, we have twelve more after this, so.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Karen Graff, and I'm the program manager at the Napa GEO Reentry Day Reporting Center. I have been with GEO Reentry for five years and have lived in Napa the most of my life, but did spend three years here in Sacramento. The program I oversee is in downtown Napa, where we have over 100 participants. Surrounding our program are numerous businesses and tourist destinations and parks, and what I observed is that no one even notices that we're there. We have not had any problems since the day we opened nine years ago, this last Friday. At our program, as with all GEO Reentry programs, we don't allow loitering, and we model and teach participants how to have respect and empathy for others and their property. We have never had any complaints from anyone in the community in the nine years that we have been open. These individuals are my neighbor. I run into them at the store, the gas station, and the bank, living their lives, just like we all do. These individuals should not be pushed aside and looked upon as unable to change. I continue to hear the community say, "Not in my backyard," but I want to reiterate that these individuals are already in your community. They're in line at the grocery store with you, they're going to the movies with you, they're eating at the restaurant with you, they're going to be released into the community with or without this program. That's just the truth of the matter. What this program will do is bring another level of support and supervision. Finally, as a reentry provider, it has been my heart's passion to work with this population and give them the chance they deserve for a better life. GEO believes in change. GEO staff pours their hearts into the work they do every day. It is our passion and it is our mission to make sure these individuals never return to the system again. These programs do make communities safer, because we provide them the skills they need. We have been successful at lowering recidivism. We have been successful at changing lives. There is no greater reward than seeing a life change, and GEO wants to be part of the solution, and tonight, I hope you will vote to be part of the solution too.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
To oppose the appeal and support the project.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
There's Amanda Owens, Emmanuel Barr, and then Dwayne Cook.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Amanda Owens. I'm an area manager for GEO Reentry Services. I'm opposing the appeal and support the project. I have been employed by GEO Reentry Services for the last nine years, and I have the privilege of overseeing our day reporting centers in the north here, which is seven counties. I'm incredibly passionate about the work that we do. I am based in our day reporting center in downtown Napa, and my husband and I live seven minutes from the facility. Each night that I go home, I feel a sense of pride in what I've done that day in helping individuals change their lives and making our communities here in California safer. You just heard from Karen Graff regarding the county of Napa and never hearing complaints. I have the opportunity to work with seven different counties, and in the last decade, not once have I ever received a complaint from community members. Not once have I ever received complaints from tourists, business owners, residents, or neighbors. In fact, I've been stopped in the community and thanked for the work that we're doing with GEO Reentry. People often have a misconception about the justice system. They assume that it's police, corrections, and our court system. But what we often forget about is the piece that you don't see behind the scenes, treatment, the most important aspect in making our communities safer. I've spent some time listening to those who are against this project and what they've had to say. I've tried to put myself in their shoes and come from a place of understanding. But what I've gained so far is that most of the opposition stems from a misconception, a lack of understanding, or a fear of the term "justice-involved individuals." GEO Reentry is here to bring an effective reentry solution to Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Emmanuel Barr, then Dwayne Cooks, and then Jose Bacardia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and thank you, council. Just to clear up a couple of additional misconceptions, so, so part of such the large group that you see before you here tonight on, on this side of the room is not just about a show of force or numbers to sway, to sway you as council members or even the members, the guests in the chamber today. But I heard one of the residents say, "It's the first time I've heard about this." And I know that we've had attempts to communicate with the community, but here tonight, we are giving you more education. And in fact, some of the people that you've heard speak here this evening are actually participants from day reports centers. So, the intent is to educate you as a council and those in the room. And, and the other misconception is that we're not in this room to be opposing anyone. We're in the room to work together as a community. Because if there's one community in District Six, or District Two, or Eight that says, "That's nice, but we don't want it in our district," then our community fails as a whole in Sacramento. If, if another district says, "Oh, oh, we'll take them and, and, and we'll coddle them," and then say, "Oh, well, but what about jobs over here? Why aren't you giving jobs here?" Then the community at large loses. So our intent tonight to have this show of force, for lack of better words, isn't to show off, it's to show the good work that we're doing and our commitment to the community. I work in community relations for GEO all across the United States. And I will tell you, full disclosure, I'm not from Sacramento, so y'all got me, okay? I'm not from Sacramento, but I'm from Chicago, I'm from Inglewood, I'm from the hood. And we have a, a, a reporting center in the city of Chicago, in the hood, that is one block away from a school, an elementary school, that has gone 25 years without incident.
Thank you for your comments.
Just thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, my next speaker is Dwayne Cooks, Jose Bacardia, then Trina Sevala.
Again, to the extent that the speakers can be ready, please be ready.
Dwayne Cooks, Jose Bacardia, and then Trina Sevala.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Dwayne Cooks. I just want to give you a little background about myself. I started with CDCR back in 1986. I was a correction officer, correction sergeant, went to Oakland as a parole agent. And I'm gonna tie these two pieces in what changed me as a person. I was on this task force with about 10 different officers, and we arrested this one guy about five times. And the last time I put handcuffs on him, he leaned over, he said, "Mr. Cooks, you're good at locking me up. How you gonna keep me out?" And that bothered me, because amongst those partners I'm with, they didn't believe in programs, and neither did I at that time. So when I went at home, I needed to sleep. I thought about it. "You're good at taking me to jail, can you keep me out?" And then I started doing my own research about evidence-based programs. What companies are out there? To help this individual that told me, "I'm not good at keeping him out, but I'm good at taking me out," I wanted to prove that individual wrong. And with all these partners that I had, it was difficult, because now I'm on the outside. I'm not, I'm not a part of the team. Do I change who I am inside and go with them, or do what, do what's best for me, just like I'm here today? What's best for me, how I feel? So I began to search those programs. I began to find out about GEO program. I went and got that guy out of prison, put him in a program. He never went back. I have my own company. I retired as a chief deputy for the parole department two years ago. I have my own company, it's called Civic Pit Stop. I hired those same individuals that come out. I've hired over 60 in San Francisco. I have another program starting on March 19th. It's called Civic Ambassador, where I'm gonna hire more of those individuals. But those individuals that I hire come from the San Francisco GEO facility. I don't work for GEO, but I hire those individuals because with evidence-based practices and employment, the two is a perfect marriage. The success rate is much higher. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clerk, next speaker.
Jose Bacardia, Trina Sevala, and then Lou Cox.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Bacardia, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County. I've lived in Sacramento all my life. I completed all my schooling here, from graduating Baltimore High School to obtain my bachelor's degree here at Sacramento State University. I have, I have nothing but great love for this city. I am also an employee with GEO Reentry Services, and I work at the San Joaquin Day Reporting Center. I'm a behavior change manager at the DRC. My job consists of, consists of assisting participants with life skills, pro-social activities, and improving their thinking. I facilitate groups and work with participants one-on-one on a daily basis. Every morning, I drive one hour each way or two hours a day to work for a company that I have, I am passionate about. I can say I'm proud to work for a company that helps make our community safer. When I heard about the GEO Reentry considering opening a DRC in Sacramento, I got excited. I got excited because I believe in behavior change. I chose to get into criminal justice to be part of the solution, to give back and help others. Being a part of GEO Reentry helps me do that. I know I'm making a difference in the San Joaquin County, and I would like to be able to do the same in Sacramento. As a Sacramento resident, I would like us to have programs to make our community safer, to give back to the community, and that work towards improving the lives of others. If we approved a program like this for in Sacramento, we would be touching many lives, just like many other communities throughout California have done with in the behavior change programs. I like to emphasize that GEO Reentry will not be bringing participants from other cities or other states into the Sacramento DRC. All the participants that would be enrolled in the Sacramento DRC live in the Sacramento area, whether the DRC is here or not. They're individuals who you shop with next, next to every day at the local supermarket, they're the people standing behind you when you're ordering at the local restaurant. Why not open an office in Sacramento where the DRC provides solutions to changing lives, reducing recidivism, and impacting public safety? The DRC is a way to make our future better, to make our community safer. I would be thrilled to have a DRC in our community, because I know what it accomplishes and the huge impact it will have on our community. Sacramento is an amazing city, but why not make it better and safer for all of its residents? Like I mentioned before, I've lived here all my life, my family lives here, my friends are here, I'm a huge part of this community. As a member of Sacramento County, I would like to my backyard and hope all you guys vote yes on opening a DRC. Thank you.
Hello. Lou Cox, and then Chris Baker.
Welcome.
Welcome. I mean, hi. My name's Trina Sevala. Eighteen years ago, I paroled from prison, validated prison gang member, and I entered programs similar to what we're here for. And what I can tell you today is that I've been out 18 years. I'm a business owner here in Sacramento. I work for Yolo County Office of Education. I work with kids, and I'm, I'm an ex-violent offender, you know, and, and I want to say that these programs work. You know, you know, they teach you how to be productive members of society. You know, they teach you how to have people skills, life skills, you know? They teach you 12-step programs, all that stuff, you know? You know, these programs, you know, they're to better our community, you know? And, you know, I'm here to support that program, you know? Because if they didn't have programs like that for me 18 years ago, you know, I wouldn't be who I am today, you know? And today, I'm a productive member of society, and I give back, you know? I give back to my community. I owned a home in, in, in that area, you know? And, and I would buy, and I sold it, you know? And I bought another home in that area where they're trying to, trying to put this place, you know? And I don't oppose it. Anything that has to do to better people, you know, let me tell you like this, some of these parolees are some of the, the, the most honest, hard-working, let me tell you, they'd save your ass if they, if you were in trouble, okay? You know, and, and I'm just here to say, you know, that these programs work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Speaker is Lou Cox, then Chris Baker.
My name's Lou Cox. I'm property manager for 7,000 Franklin Boulevard. I have a very, well, let's put it this way, I've only been exposed to this type of climate in, for the last year and a half. Many of you may be familiar with a gentleman by the name of Daniel Thomas, who runs Man Alive. I am very familiar with that program. He works with parolees on a regular basis. They're on the property all the time, and I have never, in the last year and a half, ever had one problem with them at all. I also made the opportunity to drive around the neighborhood that surrounds Franklin Boulevard, and I thought there were a lot of very nice homes, well-groomed lawns, well taken care of. It is definitely not our goal to bring anything into the Franklin community that would lower property values. That's not, that's not wise. It's not the way we work. I have closed the back two driveways coming into Franklin from Luther, because it's a private road. I have counted, there are seven grade school children that walk with their parents through the property, and there are like nine high school boys coming from Luther. That's the extent of the children on the property. I do not encourage children on the property. It is a business establishment, and that is not the place for children, anyway. But the, the real situation is, I haven't had any problems at all with the existing systems that GEO will bring to the property. If, believe me, my whole goal, I came out of retirement to come and clean up 7,000 Franklin Boulevard, and trust me, that's what I am in the process of doing, and I'm very much enjoying spending the owner's money.
Thank you for your comments. We have six people, we have six speakers left, so to the extent that they can get ready to speak. Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Chris Baker. Chris Baker, Staples Allen, then Craig Birch.
Welcome, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. I stand before you as a single father, been living in South Sacramento since 1994, worked with children in the various churches I attend in that corridor, and I worked with children in nonprofit, juvenile visiting children, Folsom Prison. And if I thought that this would jeopardize our kids or anyone in our community, I wouldn't support it. I would be the first one at the door, trying to knock it down. But what I did is I wasn't led by no one in this room, I wasn't influenced. But what I did is I wasn't led by no one in this room, I wasn't influenced, I went and did my own homework, on my own. I called Fairfield, I called Solano County, Oakland, Alameda County, went all the way outside of California, and I said, "Tell me something about this program they're trying to put in Sacramento." And no one had anything negative to say about this program. So when I did the research on my own, as a single father, a grandfather, a godfather, and a mentor to kids in the churches I work in, I would not support something that would jeopardize our children and the community. So I opposed the appeal, and I support the GEO application, and I ask you to search your hearts and your minds, and make the right decision tonight to benefit these people, which I heard someone say earlier, they're God's people, and they deserve a second chance in life also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Staples Allen, then Craig Birch, then Bill Yarong.
Projector. All right, my name is Mr. Staples. I represent the San Joaquin County DRC program. I don't live in Sacramento, but this little guy right here, he stays in Sacramento, not too far from the Day Reporting Center. I stayed in Sacramento for six years, from '04 to 2010. I got in trouble in 2012, I got out at the end of last year. Daily Reporting Center has helped me get financial stability, they have helped me with my anger issues. I show up, I have probably 97% attendance rate. We get breathalyzer tests every day when we show up, if we go out and to smoke, smoke a cigarette or a cigar, whatever, and we come back in, we get breathalyzed again. We get drug tested randomly. We do MRT, which is a, a, a moral recognition therapy booklet that we do, it's a 12-step program. There's substance abuse program, if you're, it's called OSAT, substance abuse treatment, if you have substance abuse issues. What else is there? You have parenting, help you with your kids. So GEO has helped me in the long run, and it's helped me become a better, a better father to my son. Like I said, financial stability. If it wasn't for Ms. Arquintera, Ms. Clayton, Ms. Reed, and the Mr., what's his name? Mr. Medina, Mr. Alvarado, and, uh, what's the, uh, Mr. Lot, I wouldn't have showed up, I wouldn't be there every day like I'm supposed to. I'm in phase three, I got two more weeks to, uh, do the program, but even after the program is over, there's an aftercare that you show up. What's good about it is, regardless if, there's another set of eyes out there, you know what I'm saying? So you can't say something will happen, that's just an opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Staples, thank you.
Next speaker is Craig Birch, then Bill Yarong, and then April Reed.
Good evening, members of the City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Craig Birch, I'm a chief deputy probation officer with the Napa County Probation Department. I'm here to support GEO Reentry's application to open a day reporting center. I've had the opportunity to work with GEO, they've served our community for the last nine years, they've reduced recidivism in our community, reduced jail beds, reduced taxpayer dollars, all of that's true. The crime around the area where the Day Reporting Center is, is not increased, we haven't seen that at all, there's been no complaints about that, all of that's true, but the real reason I'm here is because of the, the stories, of the clients that we serve, the people that we engage with on a daily basis, that we send to that program. We send them there because we know that the programs and the services that they, that they provide work. I've lived in the Sacramento community my entire life, I still live in Sacramento. My house that I lived in the last 10 years overlooks Franklin Boulevard. I wouldn't support anything that would be in this community that didn't, in the end, contribute to the public safety of this community, this is where I raised my family, and so I put my full support for GEO. If the people that we put into this, which already live in this community, the, the people that, that go into this program already live here, we owe it to them to give them the services, and if they succeed, we all succeed, and that, that's the purpose of all of this. So I just wanted to extend my support for GEO, and that's the reason I'm here, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Bill Yarong, then April Reed, and our final speaker is John Campbell.
Hi, I'm April Reed, and first off, I want to say, like, four, four months ago, you couldn't even give me the walk in anything that had to do with CDCR, GEO, or nothing like that. What I do have to say is that I support them tremendously, because it has changed my outlook on everything, and I'm a person that seeing is believing, and you can tell me whatever you want. So once I, once my parole officer told me to go, I refused, but I went in anyway, and I got a chance on giving them a chance on giving me a second chance. And so with me doing eight years and losing family members, my mother, my father, even my children, it helps me mentally, physically, and emotionally, you know, dealing with courts on trying to get my daughter back that I lost through being incarcerated. I don't know nothing about numbers, I don't know nothing about District 9, 7, and 8, and 5, 6, or nothing like that, but what I can say is, wherever you guys put it, you guys need to do it, because it's people like myself that do need a second chance. I ain't never had a beck and call, I got one now. I got two jobs, never had a job in my life, I got hired tattoos all over my body and my face. So what I'm saying is, regardless of your skin color, gender, or whatever, you know, help us out. So, all right.
My name is Bill Yarong, I'm a retired Sacramento County probation officer. I did high-risk supervision for most of my career, and while I was working for probation, I started working as an independent contractor, providing drug and alcohol counseling for people coming out of the federal system. These people have been coming to Sacramento for years, but we haven't had anything for them. Tried to put halfway houses, and it's a terrible transition. The halfway houses in Oakland, San Francisco, and, and Fresno do not provide a proper transition for people coming out of prison. They actually have to transition twice. If you don't have the resources, to, because you have to, if you are put on home confinement, you have to travel back and forth to the halfway house to drug test, see your case manager. None of these things are helpful to somebody coming from prison. And there's, there's accountability, I've been doing this for 30 years, part-time, doing the counseling, and there's been a lot of success. The feds don't play, they hold their people accountable, they have to drug test, they gotta have to go to counseling, and if they don't take care of business, then they don't stay in the program, they go back to prison. I'm in favor of what you guys are doing for triage, I'm in favor of any program that helps people transition from homelessness, I don't care if it's state prison, the county jail. If you want people to be successful, you have to help them get services, and they will be accountable, and if they're not, then you, you can do something else with them. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this, it's just been a tough transition, I've seen a lot of people fail because they don't have the resources, so I'm hoping that you guys will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The last speaker is John Campbell.
Good evening, thank you. My name's John Campbell, and I'm an area manager with GEO. I manage county DRCs from Tuolumne down through Bakersfield. A way of introduction, in my career, I spent 35 years as an administrator with the California Department of Corrections, watching the revolving door. I did 10 years as a consultant, both nationally and internationally, for corrections, and spent a number of years as an adjunct professor for the University of Maryland, looking into corrections. And my focus is on evidence-based programming. And as, on a personal side, I live in the Sacramento region, my family is here, my brothers, my sisters, my nephews, my nieces, my nephew's attendant, St. Patrick's. The, my, currently, my nephew and his girlfriend live on 12th Street. You know, my family is here, and we've been here for over 40 years, and we're going to continue to be here, and I want to see the neighborhood safe. This program works. Every day I walk into DRCs, and every day I see inmates, or participants, who are former inmates from the California Department of Corrections, and they say, "Where was this 30 years ago? Where was this 20 years ago?" This is the opportunity they need. This is the evidence-based programs that helps them to take responsibility for their lives, and turn their lives around, and reunite with their families. And it is what we, as society, owe these individuals. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. City Attorney, I just had a quick question for you. Is, is there any need for rebuttal from either side at this point?
Under the council rules of procedure, Vice Mayor, the applicant is entitled to rebuttal if they so choose.
Even though we, we gave them a chance to speak at the beginning?
That's correct.
Okay. So does the applicant wish to say anything further? You don't have to, this is something you could, you could waive. We've certainly heard a lot.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hanson, and members of the council. Brett Jolly, I am land use counsel for GEO, we will keep it very short. With respect to some of the issues that came up tonight, one of them that was a real misconception was the concept that there was no outreach to the community. And just to go on the record, GEO has had various outreaches with the community for the last eight months or so. They met with the Morrison Creek Homeowners Association in July, they met with the Floren Road Partnership and presented to their meeting in August. There was a community meeting at the facility to which we, it was an open house, basically, to which we invited the community to come. There was a town hall meeting at the Panel Community Center in October. There were community meetings with the Laguna Creek Homeowners Association in February, and with respect to the letter of opposition that had come from the SAC City Unified School District, we actually met with Superintendent Aguilar in January, and discussed the school district's concerns, and explained what we were doing, and that seemed to provide a level of comfort to the district, such that it has not renewed its opposition on this appeal. So we have had extensive community outreach, we are sympathetic to the concerns that are expressed by the neighbors, but really, when we look at this, we hear nothing but ultimately positive impact from putting these day reporting centers in the community, and we do believe that this will indeed bring a positive impact to the community once it is in. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Now we'll move on to the council debate. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This facility is located in District 5, but the people who came to speak tonight in opposition were from District 8. And these are the people that I go to when I need advice about positions and what needs to be done in the district. Jesse Reese back there is a longstanding member of the Metta View Neighbor Association, been working hard for years. So I go to Jesse and ask him about things. Effie Gant started the Hampton Station Neighbor Association, and she's big into urban agriculture. And she's getting her neighbors to plant food in the backyard, even though it's a small space, and is doing a great job with it. Estella Drake back there, one of the other people that I go to, is helping us organize the Hispanic community, as well as an advocate for animals and, and pets. So a lot of folks in here are people that I go to, and if they have concerns, then I have to pay attention to them. I have to listen to what their concerns are and evaluate them. The first concern that I heard was from Effie about lack of positive opportunities in the district. And it kind of hurt a little bit, Effie, to tell you the truth, because you have been working hard, I've been working hard, all of the people here that I've called have been working hard to provide those opportunities. That's why we have a Boys and Girls Club that this council approved, that's why we support your urban gardening program, that's why we support your multicultural festival, that's why with the help of Councilmember Ashby, we got the money to repave and redesign Metta View Road. So to say that there's no opportunity in District 8 is, kind of hurts you, Councilmember, because I do think we have opportunity. One of the people that spoke said that there would be kidnappers and other crimes committed by people who would be participating in this facility. And I heard Rachel, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, Rachel, I heard Rachel say that that wasn't true. Could you come up and tell us about the violent offenders again?
So, to speak to your question, Councilmember Carr, and members of the council, the, the participants in this program are those that have demonstrated long-term compliance in, while they're in, in the incarcerated facility, and then also if they are put into a residential reentry community placement in the Bay Area or in Fresno. So they've demonstrated compliance for anywhere from two to three years, minimum. They are nonviolent, non-serious offenses, and prior to even being considered for the program, they evaluate where the program is, they evaluate the appropriateness for community placement, if they are going to be employed, if they've had any issues with non-compliance in the past, and they take all of those things into consideration before even referring them to the program.
One other question before you finish. One of the speakers said that the people who were participating in this program did not have housing.
That's not correct. The folks that are in this program in particular, there are some county, because we also have programs where we do day reporting centers for county and state throughout California, and in some cases that is true, in this particular program, before they are deemed suitable, and even without the program, before they're deemed suitable for placement on home confinement in, back into Sacramento community, they first have to have their housing verified, to know that they're not living with anyone they shouldn't be, that they can sustain it, that they can continue to do those things, and that it's a safe environment.
Okay, thank you. Another concern was property values. I know there's, one of my neighbors is here from Center Parkway, they're right around the corner from me, where are you? There you are. I was having a difficult time with this one, to determine if there was any validity to it. But I live closer to this facility than all of the people that I name. I know where Effie lives, I know where Jesse lives, I know where Estella lives, I know where Rebecca lives. I am so much closer to this facility than you are, and my property values were not impacted when this was a day reporting center for the county. And I have no reason to believe that it would be impacted anymore with nonviolent people going to the facility. Thank you for clearing up the community not being well-informed. We did as much outreach as we can. How many did you go to, Chris? You went to five meetings yourself. You went to more than I did. We put it out on our news, in our newsletter, we put it out in our emails, we have over 5,000 people on our email list, and I expect the, the homeowners associations, the various neighbor associations, to help us spread the word. We put this out as much as we could all over the community. There was a concern that GEO was not the right contractor. And this was a federal contract led by the federal government, so they did the evaluation of it, and I don't think we have the authority to overturn a federal contract, I don't believe we do. And then finally, I heard, "Put it somewhere else, not in my neighborhood. Put it on the outskirts somewhere, where there's no public transportation, there's no way to get there." I don't see that happening. Reentry programs are one of the things that you told me you wanted when you elected me. When we had our first, when we had our first community meeting, you told me reentry programs was one of the things that you wanted. That's why, when I got on the council, I got the council to approve banning the box, so we wouldn't hold someone who had been convicted from a city job, and none of our vendors can ask that.
Nobody asked for reentry programs, that was me, I'm saying, you know what happened? Nobody asked for reentry programs. Nobody asked for reentry programs that was built by the same people that, ah, that jailers. That don't mean they have to. But then they want to make money on the other end.
Order in the chamber, please.
Nobody.
Order in the chamber. Mr. Carr?
I don't think they came to the meeting, but other people were here, like Jesse Reese was at that meeting, and Chris Baker was at that meeting. And they were verified that reentry programs came up high on the list of things they wanted their councilmen to establish, and that's why we had the Proposition 47 workshops. That's why we had targeted employment for people in those districts that are impoverished. So, this is just another one of the reentry programs that the community said they wanted. But even though they said they wanted, we can't do it unless we view it as the right thing to do. Is it safe? Well, it's sitting 200 feet back away from the street. It's in the interior of a business complex, and it was previously a day reporting center for the county. And when it was, there was no problem. They have signed a good neighbor policy. All of the community organizations can keep in contact with the applicants and let them know of their issues. A host of conditions have been placed on the project to include 15 participants at a time, the max that can be in the facility. There must be video surveillance on the outside of the facility. And only, participants only stay at the site for 15 minutes to two hours. So, taking all of that into consideration, where are we, Mr. Chair? Are we, do we have an open hearing? Do we need to?
You should open the public hearing, close it if you're choosing to make an action.
Based on all of that, and it's a difficult decision for me, not because of the project, but because of the strong feelings of the people that support me. But I have to come down on the side, this is something that's needed. So, I will open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and move the staff recommendation.
Councilmember Shinir.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Carr. You hit a lot of the points that I want to hit. I want to go through a few more. And first, do remind us that what we are talking about is a land use decision here. We don't have control over the operator. Heard a lot and read about, a lot about the operator, and that's not the decision point for tonight. But I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know, Rachel, if it's you or someone from GEO, if you can come up. I just want to talk a little bit again. I think this is a really important point of who the participants in the program would be, where they come from, and the levels of crimes that they might have committed to get there. I think this is one of the most important things, because this is a public safety issue. And it's also, I think, a community issue when we talk about folks coming back to their community. But if you could address those three questions, that would be great.
Okay. So, these are, this program is designed for nonviolent, non-serious folks that are under the juris, participants who are under the jurisdiction of the Federal Bureau of Prisons. And as a result of their long-term compliance, their willingness to get a job within 30 days of being in the program, and their willingness to follow all of the standards of the program, they are then allowed to release to a community placement. They are placed in, community placements are made by the Bureau of Prisons into the jur, into what is called their community of origin. So, this is where they were prior to getting in trouble. This is where they intend to re-enter back to. This is where they will be. The community placement is typically made about three to six months prior to the time that they would otherwise be coming out in the community. So, this is not a matter of if this program isn't here, these folks won't be here. It's a matter of they're going to be here, let's give them the best tools we can to have them have the greatest success. Typically, federal, under federal jurisdiction, as you probably know, that the current administration is very focused on, has a little more of a sterner position on kind of reentry and wanting to make sure that they are not having violent folks releasing too early. So, those folks are typically, are staying and serving the remainder of their time inside. It is those that are nonviolent, non-serious, and have already been compliant and deemed appropriate for community placement that come out.
Okay. So, can we go back for a second? So, what I heard you say is, these are folks who, prior to being incarcerated, were in the community?
Yes. Yes.
And what percentage of the folks who were in the community prior to be incarcerated, who we assume would come back to that community, are the participants?
All of them are, so, it's a very, I don't have the exact numbers, and I'm not sure if there are folks that are still here, they may have left already, but I don't have the exact numbers on how many are under federal jurisdiction in, within Sacramento. But all of them that are here in that community placement are all placed here because that, this is their community of origin.
So, if we were to make a condition of this, that the participants in this program were from Sacramento, were from this community, and we could think about how to define that. And I don't think 100% is the right number, but if, you know, a minimum of 75% of the participants in the program originated in the community, is that something you guys would be comfortable with?
You know, I think, I think so. It's hard for us to say because we're not the ones who define it. It's defined, it's for the federal government's standards. So, I would think, based on my experience working with these federal programs, that that would be reasonable. But I'm unclear about whether or not that is, and I don't, like I said, I thought there were some folks here that were, but I'm not unclear.
Because I think that there's a level of trust that people don't have for the company, and I think that, what I want to do is approach a couple ways that we might be able to work with that.
Okay.
But I think it's important, and we've seen the same thing when we talked about homelessness. I think when we built, stood up the shelter in North SAC, about 85% of the people were from that area. I think what we want to do is ensure that the people who are using the facility are people who would be there in any case, which you stated numerous times in the testimony.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just not sure on a percentage, per se.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may respond to that briefly. Again, Brett Jolly, counsel for GEO. Of course, the client is the gas and the attorney is the brakes. And so, I'm up here to put brakes on that as I hear the condition. And the reason I'm concerned about that is because GEO does not have, ultimately does not have the control over who the Bureau of Prisons selects to participate in this program. So, if there's a condition that it has to be a certain number of participants originating from a certain neighborhood or within city limits or within a geographic area, that would be conditioning the project with something that's beyond the applicant's control. That being said, I know that GEO wants to try to accommodate that and ensure that, in fact, that does occur. That's the information that is given to them by the Bureau of Prisons. But again, they're ultimately beholden to who is sent to the project by the Bureau. GEO reentry does not have a say over that.
Okay. And I'm only bringing it up because you've brought it up multiple times.
And it is one of their requirements. But again, as he said, we don't ultimately define that. But the Bureau's standards that I believe are within the FAQ within the staff report also specify community of origin. I just wouldn't be able to give a number.
So, could we talk a little bit about the number of employees you would have?
Mm-hmm. There will be, this program, because it is a very small program, a typical day reporting center statewide, whether it's one of our programs or some others, are typically 50 to 100. It's a fairly small program. It will operate with seven to eight staff. We do hire locally. As you've heard, we've got a lot of experienced staff that actually already live here in Sacramento, as well as always recruiting. They have a human services orientation, and we just want to make sure that there are folks who are qualified and best suited to perform the position.
So, I'm going to ask the same question then. You just said you try to hire locally. So, is there a percentage of staff that you would make a commitment to hire locally?
Well, I, again, I think we could. I mean, we post, we'll do everything we can, we do everything we can to post locally. And whenever possible, and whenever we have interest, we hire locally, as long as folks are qualified to work with our participants and to work within the federal government's standards as well.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask the question again. Is there a commitment?
If there is a standard that you'd like to put forward, I think we can, I think, you know, it's something we could do. It's certainly, and it's something we make every effort to do in every single one of our programs. I don't know what that number would be. Again, we want to be reasonable for folks that are, you know, we've got to have the folks that are qualified for the job. Are they willing to come in? And do they have the right degrees? And are they willing to work with, this is a challenging population, and are they willing to work with them?
I think we have a pretty good job market in Sacramento.
I think so, too, so I don't imagine it will be a huge issue.
Okay. So, I'm going to come back to that in a minute. Hang on, let me. So, the next piece of the puzzle for me, so you have a good neighbor policy?
Mm-hmm.
And you've prepared that already?
We have not drafted it yet. We are, we agreed to comply with all of the requirements that are outlined as part of the conditions of the conditional use permit, including doing open house events, doing direct outreach to the neighbors, and developing the policy. And we have certain standards that we automatically carry ourselves to regardless in all of our programs.
So, we have, and Mr. Carr, you could probably help me with this. We have, on page 11 of our staff report, we have a number of neighborhood associations. This is, you've got a lot of neighborhood associations up down there. So, I guess the question that I have is, would you be willing to facilitate an advisory committee with invitations to each of these neighborhood associations and P-bids?
Absolutely.
Hang on.
Oh, sorry.
That meets on a quarterly basis, at least for the first year. You could see how it goes after that. Where you would present to them, at a minimum, kind of who is in the program, not names, obviously, but the characteristics of folks in the program. We could talk then about where they come from, and we could talk about where your employees are coming from. And what I'd like to do is, on both the employees and on the participants, at least put some aspirational numbers in there that we could see. So, I understand the federal government has control, you don't have control over it. But if the aspiration is that 75% of the folks are from the neighborhood, if the aspiration is that 50%, of the employees are from the neighborhood, and we can help you define the neighborhood, we did that with the Arena Project, is that something that you can agree to? And there, I think, is a level of accountability that you could be held to. And these would be, this would be a condition to do the advisory committee with goals for the other two.
Mm-hmm.
Because I want the council to have some ability, we can rescind the CUP if you're not meeting the conditions.
Absolutely. And we, actually, I didn't get to talk about it earlier because we ran out of time, but we already, as part of this program and in our program, in all of our programs that serve federal contracts, we already operate community advisory boards. And per the conditions that were discussed at the Planning Commission, we have agreed to also not only provide that opportunity for neighborhood, neighbors, neighborhood associations, but also to engage with the P-bid and to invite and include Sacramento Unified School District on that community advisory board, if they're so inclined. That board meets quarterly, and not only would we be able to report on the things you talked about, but also be able to receive feedback from how things are going, what are some other things that we can do to create opportunities, events, fundraisers, whatever, you know, community cleanups, whatever that is, that will benefit the community that we're in. And we would take all of that in as well within that community advisory board setting. And that won't be for a year, that's for the length of the contract.
Right. So, let me, one more thing I want to talk about. So, I know we start off with up to 30, and that can go up to 50 with an increase every year, correct?
Yeah. With an incremental increase.
And what's, what's the trigger for the increase?
The only thing that would be a trigger for even requesting the increase, and we'd have to go back and request that increase as it came up, but would be if the federal agency said we would like to increase the capacity in the program. Typically, that doesn't happen, typically over the life of the program, that doesn't change significantly. But if they were to say, "Gosh, this is going really well, we are excited to be able to do that, we want to serve more people in Sacramento, what can you do there?" That would allow for that opportunity for us to then approach and, about making the appropriate increase.
Where's the, where's the community input onto that? So, let's say the federal government says, "We're good to go from 25 to 30, or 30 to 35, up to 50." But you do have calls for service because of the program that you're running or whatever. How do we ensure that the community has some say-so in that as well?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that part of that is that there is a very limited increase and that, that that would require going through staff approval process as well. Is that correct?
Five per year, I know that, yeah.
Yes. Jason Holland, senior planner. If there was a request to deviate from conditions of approval, which in here state an increase of no more than five per year, up to a maximum of 50, it would require a modification to the conditional use permit.
So, that's a staff-level decision?
It's determined by the planning director if it is a public hearing.
And can we require that the planning director do outreach to the community on that to get community input before any increases are granted?
Yes.
So, we can make that a piece of the puzzle as well? Okay. So, I think for myself, you know, the need of these programs is huge. And I think Mr. Carr brought this up, too, and I mentioned to Mr. Garrett when we talked about "Ban the Box" and we talked about "Area Congregations Together." I mean, I remember Howard Lawrence standing at the mic on multiple occasions saying, "You have to do this." I think this is an extension of, we need to take care of folks in Sacramento and help them get on the right path. I had a conversation, I've been kind of bouncing back and forth in my own mind on this, I had a conversation with my entire staff today. And the person who was most articulate was a woman who lives a few blocks from this and saying, "If there are people in the community that need this help, I'd rather they be in a program than not be in a program, and I would feel safer with my own kids." So, I'm going to support the motion. But what I'd like to do is add the requirement of, or the condition, that there be an advisory committee that is, that consists of at least a minimum of the organizations listed on page 11, plus SAC City Unified, which I think is a valuable addition, that you set an aspirational goal of 75% of the participants originating in the community and 50% of the employees also originating in the community, and that you report on those numbers on a quarterly basis to the advisory committee. And that we give our planning director the direction that if an increase is requested in the number of participants, that you go back to the community for community input before that is granted. So, with that, Mr. Carr, if that's okay as a friendly amendment, I'm happy to support the motion.
I have a request for clarification.
Sure.
We can do everything to invite those folks. We have programs that have run for 20 years.
Invitation.
Okay.
We can't require that they come.
Right. And that was...
I would hope that they would, and I think I praise it that it consists of these people, but it's up to them to show up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shinir. Councilmember Harris. Oh, Mr. City Attorney, you're leaning forward. Did you have something? Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question for you as well. How many years is the contract you have with the federal government?
This one, this is a five-year contract. Excuse me.
That's pretty typical for federal day reporting center contracts.
Well, this is actually, is, there's, it's pretty typical for about five years for day reporting center contracts in general. But the federal government's been a little bit slower to start up with this idea of a day reporting center. So, this would actually be the first of its kind in California, and only the second, I believe, to even start up nationally. They've typically done only residential reentry programs whereby the states and the counties have been much more progressive and active in doing day reporting centers.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to relate a little experience that I've had with day reporting centers in District Three. We had also, as Councilmember Carr had, in this location, a county day reporting center. And I have to tell you that the clientele that goes to the county day reporting centers, I think, is just a little bit rougher than in the federal model here. But we didn't have any significant problems with that center. There were some complaints. We also had an application for a federal day reporting center in District Three, and one thing that's missing here that we did at that time was have our police department vet the program and present to the River District Board whether or not they thought it would cause the police department any grief or more calls for service. And the fact of the matter is, the captain reported back that he thought it was a program that would cause no harm to our area. You know, there is a nexus between parolees and homelessness, and the way it works in Sacramento, and a lot of people don't know this, is that between 40 and 65 parolees are released daily from the CCC county facility, released in the city of Sacramento nightly. And without res... and without resources. So what happens? They walk to Loaves and Fishes, and they immediately join the homeless community. This is not a good way to deal with parolees, and I can tell you, it happens in my district every day, and it does create a lot of problems. This kind of program really does offer resources and get people back on their feet. And from what I gather, they're actually pre-selected for this program to be people who are likely to succeed, you know, given the resources. I think it's really a pretty good model. I personally don't believe it will do harm, and I think it will do a lot of good. I work a lot with the homeless population because there are so many homeless in District 3. We started the Triage Center, and the first thing that I did was engage Northern California construction training to be, to bring 25 parolees to help me build partitions to serve the homeless population in the shelter. So, and also, the pit stop program that I started in the River District was staffed by parolees, hired by Dwayne Cooks and Dewan Lewis over here. Parolees can rehabilitate, you know, the fact of the matter is, a lot of people make mistakes in our society, and if we don't believe that they can rehabilitate, we might as well just throw away the key. But we can't even afford to do that, right? So we're releasing a lot of people from prisons just because we can't house them. Without rehabilitative programs, we really lose this battle. So I just wanted to relay that experience, that I've had a lot of success working with parolees, and I've seen what, given the opportunity and some resource, that people envision a different life for themselves. And it's really directly analogous to the homeless population as well. And as I said, a fairly significant percentage of our homeless population in Sacramento are parolees. We spend a lot of money trying to bring these people out of a very difficult condition in their life, and try to, we're gonna try to house 2,000 homeless people, some of those will be parolees, actually quite a few. You know, all things taken into consideration, Jay really went through the land use piece of this decision, and I appreciate that, because this is a decision to grant a CUP. But there's also the greater societal decision here, and we heard a lot of people expressing their angst about it, but I just wanted to offer that my experience has been largely positive, almost exclusively, quite frankly. And I hope to reinstitute the pit stop program, and we are gonna hire parolees. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have a few thoughts, and my comments probably would have been shorter, but I actually didn't know this was a controversial item, and none of you came to see me on this, on the GEO side. So normally, when something's sort of ramping up controversial, some, they make their rounds and they come see all the council members. So I'm about as far away from District 8 as you can get, but normally, I still would have gotten a call. And I texted my staff as I was sitting here to say, did these guys reach out and we didn't make time, or what happened? And we checked quickly, and there were no, no messages from you. So I probably wouldn't, I would have probably asked you these questions there. I, as my colleague, especially Vice Mayor Hanson, will tell you, I don't like to ask questions I don't already know the answer to when I'm sitting at this dais, but I'm gonna ask you a couple, so if you would stand up. The first one, were you in my district? The first question I would ask you would be, are sex offenders allowed in your program?
There is no restriction that specifically says they can't. However, again, they'd have to meet all of those other requirements that already stated. So they've got to be nonviolent, non-serious, they've got to be appropriate for community placement at that location, they have to have demonstrated long-term compliance, they take into, they will take into consideration if they are a public safety risk factor, and then they would not be placed in a community placement, as well as if there have been any issues with other community placements and their likelihood of being employed.
Okay. So I'll ask your legal counsel, because it's clear to me that you have applied for a federal bid and been selected, which is good for you and a tough process, but do you have any opportunity at this point to change any of those restrictions? Could you add in your contract at this point any restriction on sex offenders?
We cannot specifically on sex offenders, they don't allow that. We have other contracts. However, again, it's, we've got a lot of these programs, there are a very small number of sex offenders that are releasing early for community placement, if at all, and even again, and again, it'd have to be, meet all those other factors. And this is a very small program in comparison to what the need is, so they're really focusing on those folks that meet all those requirements.
Okay, I think that's all my questions for you. So this is the world that I used to work in before I was a council member. Some of you who know me well, in fact, that's why I know a couple of the people that you've hired. I don't know your company, but I know a few of the people that you've hired. I worked for Corrections. In fact, the Sacramento Community-Based Coalition, the day reporting center that was in Councilmember Harris's district, I actually placed there. And, and I wrote the program, and I am very familiar with low-level offenders. And the federal government wasn't working in day reporting centers at the time, but CDCR was, and they were wanting to revamp their model and do something a little different than day reporting centers, and do more of a wraparound service model, which is why I wrote the SCBC for them, which is a really successful program. If your recidivism rates are as low as you claim them to be, that's very, very good. Although federal people are a little easier to work with, but the state corrections rate is abysmal, and we have to have programs. We, we have to have programs for folks coming out of these institutions, federal, county, state. We don't have enough of them, and, but it bothers me a little that a big chunk of your argument was, these are the people in your neighborhood anyway, which is generally true, but then you couldn't promise Councilmember Chenier that they would be from the community. It sounds like the federal government has designated a larger district than just the region of Sacramento, which is a little bit concerning for me. I wish you would have come see me, so that I could have asked you some questions and talked to you a little bit more. It's an area I know a lot about, and I would have been interested in trying to help, maybe, maybe help my, my colleagues a little bit on this one, since I've done this too, been in your shoes. I tend to side with communities on these types of issues, but in this instance, the issue before us is not whether we like GEO or not, we don't get to make that decision. And quite frankly, I wouldn't want anybody to walk out of here and think that we were putting a stamp of approval on GEO. I know almost nothing about you. And the couple people who I know that you hired are good people, but I don't know anything about your company, and I used to work in this world, and I don't know you, I don't know who you are. But I don't see how we need to make a land use decision to not allow a day reporting center where a day reporting center used to be. That's the piece in my mind that's just, I'm just struggling with. Because generally, conditional use permits are for things like pet shops and, you know, drive-throughs and things that can be kind of controversial, or they create a, some type of issue with the environmental regulations. So usually, once you put in like a drive-through or a pet shop, then, then that's what comes there again later. So if you have a McDonald's and they go away, somebody else that wants a drive-through comes into that same space. So it's really hard for me, from a land use perspective, to say no. That's the only question asked of us today, is can they do a day reporting center on this site where there already used to be a day reporting center? I don't see how we say no to that. That being said, I do wish that I'd had a chance to talk to you earlier in the process, and, but I would not, in a million years, separate from Councilmember Carr on this vote. I want to support him, and I, and he has, by the way, been an absolute champion on banning the box and trying to create opportunities for people, and I just would never dream of not having your back on this vote, Councilmember Carr. So I'm in.
Councilmember Jennings.
So, Councilmember Carr, you know I love you with all my heart and soul. You're my, you're my partner.
But?
And this is not directed to you, because I think you do a great job in your community. It's obvious by all the work that you do, and how you involve your community, and how you get engaged with your community, and all the great work you're doing, I have nothing but applaud for, applause for you. And so this has nothing to do with you, and it has nothing to do with what you've done. This does have everything to do with GEO, as far as I'm concerned. So you brought all these experts here tonight, and you brought some impressive speakers, high up in management, all the way down to the client who takes advantage of the services from all over the state of California. And yet, the community doesn't trust you. And the community doesn't feel like, they feel like this is being shoved down their throat. And the Sacramento City Unified School District says no, because they don't feel like it's safe for their kids and their staff and their teachers and everybody who works there. And the community doesn't feel like that. So I don't know who's in charge of your public relation plan, but I'm not convinced that you have one and that you did a good job, even though you had five community meetings. I'm not convinced that you did a good job of reaching the people that you needed to talk to, to tell us about all these great things that you're doing in all these other states. You didn't do that. So somewhere along the line, I gotta say, I can't support you because you didn't do what you're supposed to do in Sacramento, which is where I govern. So I heard all the great things that go on throughout the rest of this state, I didn't hear in Sacramento. You got a lack of, lack of town hall meetings, community's not well-informed, residents feel dumped on, company is not trusted, neighborhood associations are not in favor, lack of understanding, fear. Community feels like this is being shoved down their throat. You got a superintendent who just got here, and he's saying, no, in a letter to us. And so just like Councilmember Ashby said, you didn't do a good job of reaching out to us, I'm convinced you didn't do a good job of reaching out to us, and I'm now convinced you didn't do a good job of reaching out to them. And so I say shame on you. As a company of your expertise and your level and all the great things you do, and all the evidence-based programs that you provide, and the good work that you do, I know you have the ability to communicate to a, a community. And you see, it wasn't a huge community tonight, but they didn't feel like they had been informed. So, you know, it'd be very hard for me to support you, because what, what I worry about is, Councilmember Chenier was up here on the dais, dais, thank you, dais, negotiating what should have been negotiated long before we ever got in here. So where's the community benefit program? Where is it that we can have these kind of things with employees from the area, and whether it's 75% and, and 50%, and all those things? That should have been taken care of a long time ago. That should have been a part of the whole agreement, to make sure that when you came into Sacramento, that people said, yeah, I do trust you because you're gonna hire our own, you're gonna serve our own. So I, you know, I have a hard time right now supporting you, and, and as much as I love my brother and everything that he does, and as much as I know about day reporting centers, and as much as I believe in second chances, I can't support you tonight.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I think I'm kind of would, you know, have the same concern here about, you know, the, the issue of, of working with the community. And so, you know, first, I mean, what's been difficult about this is, you know, my own personal beliefs about for-profit correctional programming. I mean, frankly, my opinion is that that is a responsibility from the public era, that that is a responsibility the federal government actually should be doing on its own and not contracting out or doing it. But we don't have, we don't have control of that. This is the system that we have in here, and I think, I think the, the American people could do better than that. No offense to you as a business, but, but that's the reality. The, the issue that I have here is, and what makes this difficult, again, it is a land use question, but the other issue that I find this is that, you know, we have no reporting facility here. The folks that are being released in Sacramento have to go to Fresno, have to go to San Francisco. And I know from my own personal experience, my own family, my own family members and friends who are in the correctional system, they made mistakes. They did, they did some things that they should not have done, and they hurt people, and they came out of the correctional system. You know, and when they come out, many times they don't have access to transportation, many times they have issues, even getting a license, getting the, the way to try to get to their, we make it almost, and we find every single barrier for people who want to do something different, we make it extremely difficult for them to ever get back on track. And in some cases, you know, the sentiment is, well, tough luck, you, you screwed up. But that kind of mentality only makes things worse, and only hurts more lives, and it only hurts more people. And I'll tell you, it hurts, it, the people get hurt the most are children. And I seen it, because I spent many holidays, you know, watching my dad behind a glass wall, going between in and out of jail and prison. And the thing that bothered me the most was listening to my sister describe her experience at Christmas at a correctional facility with my dad. Now my dad, you know, if there, if, if our correctional system in California and the federal government would have done a good job of recognizing that always this tough-on-crime approach doesn't really lead to any significant progress, maybe after a jail situation, something would have changed in my dad's behavior, or in my cousin's behavior, or some of my friends' behavior, maybe he, it wouldn't have led to another situation and incident where they're in prison. Maybe after the first time with the felony, he wouldn't have ended up becoming a second striker, you know? Those types of things, because we have such, with such, such a narrow-minded, narrow-minded view of the correctional system, has led to many children being hurt. And again, as much as I have a problem with for-profit day reporting centers, we don't have those issues. And I see that. And so to me, you know, we need to take what tools we have to make those facilities available. I think Councilmember Ashby, from just a land use perspective, if there was a day reporting center before, from a legal standpoint, what do we do about saying, well, it doesn't fit there? But I do have a problem with the way that the conditions are drafted here, requiring neighborhood advisory. I think Councilmember Chenier has added a little stronger benefit to saying, you know, we, we should have an advisory council. But the way that this B1 condition on page 18 of 45 in the staff report basically says that prior to the issuing of the building permit, the applicant shall prepare a good neighbor policy for review and approval by the Planning Director. Nowhere in that first sentence does it say that the applicant must work with the neighbors to draft the good neighbor policy, okay? And I have gone down this road once before on good neighbor policies, and I won't go down it again, okay? Where the applicant wrote the good neighbor policy without inclusion of the neighbors, and then, guess what? It was no surprise that the neighbors had issues with what the applicant was doing, and there wasn't communication. So here are condition number one, the Planning Director is being charged with approval and review. So I'm gonna ask our Planning Director, or Planning Staff, who is going to function as the Planning Director on this application, to, to come up and ask, as part of your review and approval, will you require that the applicant draft the good neighbor policy with the neighbors identified in the conditions?
Yes, I think that's a, a good idea, and I imagine if that's part of the motion tonight and the will of the council, I will absolutely do that, yes.
So amended. So then, the applicant will not get their permit if they do not draft a good neighbor policy with the review of the Planning Director, which means it will require consultation and input from the neighbors. Is that, am I reading that condition correctly?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Tom Pace. Thank you very much. So, you know, so that's my biggest concern here, because I do feel reentry facilities, and I do feel these services need to happen. And the folks who, and I mean, you, you heard it tonight, I mean, the folks who finally make that step, that to walk in the door, they made that first step in making a decision that they're gonna change their life. Not everyone is successful, you had a 1% there that, that fell through, but everyone makes that step, and it's not an easy step. But it's a step that leads to less people getting hurt, and that, I think, is one of the toughest things to, to deal with. Nobody wants these facilities around them, nobody wants, I mean, I would have, if it was in my district, I would have supported it. If it was in East Sacramento, I think you should probably look at a facility in East Sacramento too, because we need more facilities, you know? I think what we need to do is make sure that we're providing more options for people to actually get back on their feet. I do want to make some comments here about the, what a conditional use permit says. And this is for, for our, our residents here, and not just those who live in the community. A conditional use permit can be revoked if you fail to meet the conditions. One of the conditions on, on One of the conditions on, in this permit, on page 20 of 45, number B27, "The applicant is responsible for reasonably controlling the conduct of persons on the site and shall immediately disperse loiterers." I mean, one of the concerns I've heard about day reporting centers for a long time, and any kind of these facilities, that people get out, they start smoking cigarettes outside, they're loitering, they're making it feel unsafe. Well, guess what? B27 says you cannot do that, so I'd like the applicant to stand up here. Do you promise to honor B27, and if not, lose your permit?
Absolutely.
Good. I'm glad that that's publicly written here. The other issue, the issue of crime, the issue of some of the, like graffiti and the condition of the property. I mean, I'm glad that you actually had the property owner here to talk about that, because what we don't want is another asset in the community becoming less, less presentable. So that's item 29. Do you promise to commit to meeting with condition item 29, and if not, then you lose your permit?
Yes, with it, yes, we do.
If any of the neighbors see that any of these conditions, whether cameras or lighting is out, or that they're not having the adequate security isn't being met, I ask the neighbors, let's, let's work on making sure, and now that we have an advisory committee, we can hold our feet to the fire and say, "You're gonna lose your conditional use permit. You will not continue to operate in our city." Now, so that is the only amendment I'm asking. I wanna ask the applicant, why you wouldn't make a stronger standard, or even a more public reason of hiring, right now saying, more people from Sacramento? Maybe we can't control what the federal government gives you as far as the flow of applicants within the city limits, but you, you're the employer, you get to choose who you hire. Why can't you commit to more than, why can't you commit to at least 50%?
Oh, I think we already did commit to at least 50%. I think that was one of the aspirational goals that the Councilmember Chenier listed, yes. And, and it's really not that, it's not that we won't make every attempt. They do have to pass federal background check as well, as well as ours, and they have to meet the minimum qualifications that are required for that job. I don't foresee that being an issue with the large population within Sacramento, but we have to be clear about, you know, making sure it's folks that wanna work with this population and that meet all of the required, the job requirements.
Since I kinda brought this one up, maybe what we could do, you're gonna have to hire people at certain times, they may or may not be available at that time, but I think that what I'd like to see, or maybe what you can do for the advisory committee is, and I'm an employer, so I get that, sometimes it's pretty hard to find the right person in the right place, but I also don't want it to be an excuse.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And so what I would like is that your hiring efforts be transparent. So to the advisory committee, if, if you are not hitting a 50% goal, that the commitment that you make is letting the advisory committee know what outreach you've done, where you've done it, what efforts you've made, so they can really come to their own conclusions about whether you're doing everything possible to hit the goal.
Well, and we would welcome their advice, too. You know, sometimes there are local newspapers, local groups, local organizations, that really are even more connected into potential prospective employees, and we would welcome, and we do that everywhere we open a program, and we would welcome their input as well in that process.
That works better, because I think the, the issue of, when you, your argument that, "Well, we don't know if we could find the right people." Napa's about 80,000 people, we're about half a million, with two, with a number of educational institutions and a university, which I think has Sac State the largest criminal justice system in California, the criminal justice program, undergraduate program. I would, I would hope that you could
I would, as well.
Find, make that effort. Good. The, the last point I think I'll bring up on this is, you're a private business, you've got, obviously, you know, you've got to run a business, but I would like to see a commitment to the community, to putting some, some dollars on recidivism education, and how to better, you know, address the bigger issue. I mean, to me, that is, that is something we have to, we have to do a better job at. So I don't know how that looks like, but I wanna hear that you would commit to working with the community and doing some outreach, doing some kind of, some kind of educational campaigns on these issues. I mean, I gotta respect the hard work that Mr. Carr has done here on the Band the Box and helping people stand up, but I wanna, I wanna know if that's something you will, you as a company are willing to do.
Absolutely. And I think, and we have done that. Again, it's one of those, didn't have a lot of time to cover. We've done that in other communities, targeting specifically what are those community needs. In this case, at your request, it would be specifically to target anti-recidivism efforts. And this is a community issue, and it needs community solutions. So we would engage community partners, engage neighbors, engage community leaders, in whatever that looks like, to have it be the most impactful.
Okay, good. Well, I wanna make sure that, I know, because I, Mr. Reese, I've known him since, since I was a student, you know, at Sac State, and, you know, when you're saying this to the, the community here, I wanna make sure that, that you're gonna hold up your end of the bargain, that you're gonna work with the community, you're gonna invest some of your dollars into the community. And I know you're doing the good work of trying to get people in the right track, but I think there's more that needs to be done in that area. And if you're, and if that's the case, you know, again, with my feelings about the way that the system is in, you know, in the federal government, you know, this is, this is something we just need, because I don't wanna hear the stories of kids going through that experience. It's more than just the person who's gone through the system, it's the families that are impacted by it. So with that, I'll support your motion, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Gera. I'll just make a couple of quick comments. First, I just wanna thank the public who's here tonight. You've been very patient. This is, as long as a time will spend in an item like this, and I think you've all been very thoughtful in your comments and largely treated each other with respect. On land use decisions, it's generally our practice, because council members know their district well, to defer to the council members, in this case, that have the district that's impacted. So Mr. Carr and Mr. Chenier, thank you for your very thoughtful comments here. And just lastly, you know, the, it's clear that the federal government is not our favorite, and, and they keep proving that over and over again, that they don't necessarily have always the best interests of the people of California or the people of Sacramento in mind. And I don't blame the, the neighborhood for doubting the intentions of the federal government in this particular case, nor some of the, the labor issues related to the privatization of federal services. I think that's, that's a really important issue, but that is not necessarily the issue before us. It's purely a land use issue, as was discussed by Councilwoman Ashby and Mr. Gera. So with that
I do have some part permissions.
No, we have to take a vote.
Yeah.
With that, I'll call for a vote on the item. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed, please say no.
No.
Those who abstain. So Madam Clerk, we have seven in favor and one opposed. Item passes. Sorry, the, the appeal is rejected. Appeal is rejected, and the CUP is approved. So thank you. We'll now go on to council comments, questions, ideas, and I believe Madam City Clerk has some appointments.
I have one commission appointment to report to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Devon Lovell.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a report on the governance ad hoc.
One second, Mr. Carr. If you're leaving the chambers, please just do so quietly, you're free to talk in the lobby. We just are gonna wrap up the rest of our meeting. Thank you, thank you all for being here tonight. Feel free to take your conversations into the lobby. Mr. Carr.
Just a short report on the government ad hoc. We did meet last Friday, had a full, full attendance. The ad hoc is ready to move forward with the treatment of staff and the limits on the general manager. Both of those have been thoroughly vetted by the ad hoc, and the general manager's limits have been vetted by the general, by the city manager. So we are ready to move, we'll have that to council very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Councilwoman Ashby.
Yes, this is for our city manager, Howard Chan. First of all, just wanna say to you all, Happy Women's History Month, and we're gonna celebrate it this month in several ways throughout the council meetings, but I need your help expeditiously, Mr. Chan. Through the tremendous work of a team of individuals, but particularly Nicholas Hydorn, doing some research in the Sacramento Room, and then assisted a bit by Devon Lovell and Katie Maple, they have identified a terrific woman named Luella Johnstone, who you will all learn more about later, but here's the Cliff Notes version. She was the first woman ever elected to the Sacramento City Council, but it gets way better than that. She was elected in 1912, which is eight years before women had the right to vote in the country. But Sacramento, by the way, beating out San Francisco, was one of the first places in the country to give women the right to vote, and in the following year, she ran for office on a slate with four guys and one. She is the first woman in the state of California to ever be elected to a city council, and we are about 80% of the way through the research of all big cities at the time, and she appears to be the first woman ever elected to a city council in a big city. And so really wanna honor her this month, and where I need your help, City Manager Chan, is the request has come from the community to name the historic city hall chambers after her, and I need help with that policy, so that I can bring it back to council, preferably in time to honor her with that when the resolution comes in a few weeks. I was asked by your staff to bring it up at council, so that you could have what you need to move forward.
Could we also have a nice photo or picture of her framed?
So I will just tell you guys, there's so much fun stuff I'm gonna bring to you about her, that if you wanna get involved with, because all this research, you guys know Nick Hydorn, because he's a charter guy. I call him a charter nerd. I was trying to censor myself, but I'm too tired. So he's a charter nerd, and in his charter research on the city of Sacramento, he found this story about her. So we're gonna have, she raised her money by having tea parties, so we're gonna have a little tea party for her that will support
The good kinda tea party.
Yeah, the good kinda tea party, like with actual tea and china and cookies. And we're gonna do that to support the Sacramento Room and the great work of the Sacramento Public Library, and I'm gonna invite all of you, and I hope you guys will come. And we're gonna turn, Nick Hydorn wrote this in a three-part blog on the blog Sacrementality, and I'm going to pay to turn that into a book on the I Street Press from the Sacramento Public Library, and I'll make sure you guys each get a copy. It really is a magnificent story about a woman who really just beat the odds. She also, by the way, was a single mom with kids when she ran. So Eric, we're not alone, right? She was dealing with kids, too, in 1912 on her own. We will figure it out with our help, right? Anyway, so we're gonna do a lot of cool stuff around women's history, but this Luella piece is really neat. Sacramento Kings are helping us honor her. They're doing a video about her that will be shown this Friday, too, when we take the women's leadership team of the city down to the suite, which we do annually during this month. And the Kings will also recognize their three Women of the Year, and those women will be announced this Friday night at the Kings game, and then I'll tell you who they were next week at council. So lots of fun things happening for Women's History Month that I am trying very hard to help coordinate and get, get it all done in the 31 days we've got.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ashby.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ashby, that'll be a great tribute to the very progressive history of Sacramento.
You need to bring your daughter and join me at that.
No doubt. A couple of quick announcements. First, we have Food Truck Mania returning to McKinley Park, starting this Friday, March 9th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. again at McKinley Park, and that will run, I believe, through October. Long run there. And also, I wanna thank Councilmember Ashby on this. We are about to reinstitute an old institution on Northgate Boulevard. It hasn't happened for two decades, but we're gonna have a parade honoring the opening day of Nahtomas Youth Baseball and the Nahtomas Girls Softball. The parade will begin at 9:00 a.m. at Smythe Academy, 2781 Northgate Boulevard, and continuing along Northgate, ending at Rio Tierra Junior High, 3201 Norsted. This is really exciting. You know, this, this community kinda needed a boost, and I can tell you, the civic pride that's coming up around this parade is really palpable. This is really special thing for the Northgate Gardenland community. I'm very excited to support it. Thank you for your financial support. Also, Councilmember Serna added some, some money, so I thank him as well. This is gonna be a great celebration of a great community, and I hope that you'll all come out Saturday and join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Gera.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. A couple of announcements here, and just one thing to follow up with the city manager. I wanted to look at other opportunities we can work with St. John Shelter as we move through the triage area. I know that they've got some issues with the county, and I think, you know, they're in a, in a situation where we have to figure out, how do we make sure that that program continues to work, move forward? I know it's been helping a lot of folks in, in my council district and like to see anything we can do. So, Mr. City Manager, if we can, if I can follow up with you on that, on that need.
Eric, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, I asked for that as a report back a couple months ago, and there's actually a report right now. So I see Erin in the audience, Emily could come see you. It's not public, so you would have no way of knowing but for asking, but I think if you reached out to Emily, and it's timely for you.
Well, very good, good. Thank you. Good. A couple of items here. College Glen Little League Parade on March 10th. So this is, join myself and the mayor for March 10th at 8:00 a.m. We're gonna meet at the Rayleigh Shopping Center at Folsom Boulevard, and we're gonna do our parade, parade from the Rayleigh Shopping Center out to Glenbrook Park for the College Glen Little League Parade. Also, the Tahoe Talik Little League Opening Day will also be March 10th. Join us at 10:00 a.m. for the, at the Little League Baseball Fields, at the Tahoe Talik Fields on, at 7401 San Joaquin Street. For those of you who know, it's off of 65th Street near the railroad, at 7401 San Joaquin Street. Mark your calendars at the end of the month, the Tahoe Park Easter Egg Hunt, this is the first one we're gonna have, on March 24th, 9:00 a.m. at Tahoe Park. And then the Avondale Glen Elder South Inn and the Southeast Village Neighborhood Association is having their annual Egg Stravaganza on Saturday, March 31st, at 11:00 a.m. at the George Sims Community Center. Come out and enjoy all the fun with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your brevity, Mr. Gera. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Three announcements and an adjourned memory. First, tomorrow night, the Southland Park Neighborhood Association has their annual meeting at Bell College Library. It's tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. On Thursday, Councilmember Hanson and I will be hosting a community meeting to discuss traffic issues and others, and that will be at Hollywood Park Elementary School at 6:00 p.m. We've worked with the principals of Hollywood Park, Leonardo da Vinci, and Sutterville Elementary School, and we're inviting particularly the students and parents to talk about safety and particularly around crossing the street. Friday, we have our peace walk, that is every week, and that will be at New Hope Church, which is on basically Sutterville and Highway 99, and that's at 5:00 p.m. Sorry, I'm told that the Southland Park Neighborhood Association, I have the wrong week, so not tomorrow night. And then finally, I wanna do an adjourned memory, you know
Can I make an announcement?
Do I do that first? Go ahead.
Mr. Vice Mayor, before the, we have an adjourned
Much for brevity.
Yeah, so much, yeah. I apologize for this. So again, for those who are interested, coalition of folks, I know all our council members, and folks from, our state representatives, our senators, are all going to be meeting tomorrow morning, sharp, we will be starting sharp at 8:00 a.m., a rally over at 507th, well, I guess it's David Stern Walkway, it's technically Seventh, Seventh or Seventh Street, yeah. And regarding the issue of Attorney General Jeff Session and their position contrary to our city on immigration, basically standing up for our fellow sacramentants, supporting their, our efforts, and reminding folks that we are here to make sure that everybody gets the legal access and legal information they need in this time.
Great, I'll be there, as we all will. All right, so what I was gonna say is, we talked a lot about our police chief and how wonderful he is. We're all products of those who raise us, and I wanna adjourn a memory in Daniel Han's mother's memory, who passed away recently. Mary Jean Han was an amazing woman who gave selflessly to the Oak Park neighborhood, the Painesville community, and anyone in need of compassion. Her wish was to have her service at the Oak Park United Methodist Church and to have a party in McClatchy Park. The memorial service is planned for March 9th at 1:00 p.m. at the Oak Park United Methodist Church, which is at 3600 Broadway, and then a party immediately following at McClatchy Park. In lieu of flowers In lieu of flowers, she wishes that people donate to the City of Refuge, which is www.cityofrefuge SAC.com in her honor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ashby.
On that note, Councilmember Chenier, in honor of our good Chief Han, I want to urge the rest of you, and I will kick us off, I will donate $500 to City of Refuge in Daniel Han's mother's name at his request, to serve the youth of Oak Park, and I hope the rest of you will, will join me in supporting his wishes that we, that we give to that charity in honor of his mother.
Thank you. I have one adjourned memory as well. Mary Jean was an amazing woman, and we also lost on Sunday an amazing man, Russ Solomon, who founded Tower Records. As all of us were cheering for Lady Bird during the Academy Awards, and Tower Theater itself had, had changed its marquee as a pivotal figure in our community or landmark, Russ passed away watching the Academy Awards in the style that he was used to, asking for another glass of whiskey, and having some commentary on the proceedings in front of him. But he truly left an indelible mark, not only on our city, but on the world, for the ethos of no music, no life, and bringing music, particularly music that at the time, when he started selling records in his father's pharmacy, which is now where Tower Cafe is, nobody really believed that the music industry would be what it became. And so his dad gave him that opening, and he ran with it. Eventually, having a worldwide presence, Tower Records, known to us, but known all over the world. And then Russ, in his retirement, didn't really stop. He became a photographer, I know. He captured many local individuals, continued a lot of his philanthropic work in the arts. His wife Patty and his son Michael worked with him on many of those things. And then just last fall, two big things happened. One is, he got his own star on the Walk of Stars here in Sacramento. And then with Mayor Steinberg, we broke ground on Solomon's Deli, named in his honor on the 700 block of K. Was supposed to be open by now, but because of construction delays, Russ unfortunately wasn't, isn't going to be here to see that. But it was also just announced recently, he was among the first inductees into the Music Business Hall of Fame, and he was to travel in the next month or so to, to be part of that ceremony. So in honor of Russ Solomon, and with respect to his wife and son, I'd like to adjourn the council meeting in his memory, and in, in honor of the idea of music bringing us life. Thank you.